Okay. Good morning, and welcome to everyone present in the chamber for this meeting of the Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire. My name is councillor Richard Cleaver, and I am the chairman of this committee. On my right is my vice-chairman councillor Chris Reeve, and on my left is our Democratic Services Officer Jess Wossey Yates. Also present in the chamber is our scrutiny officer for today's meeting, Tracey Johnson, who is covering for Simon, who is unfortunately off sick. We wish him all the best, hope he will be recovered and with us again soon. Thank you. For those of us in the chamber, if there is a fire alarm, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors, move through reception, assemble in the car park at the front and await further instructions. In addition to welcoming all members of the committee to this meeting, I should also like to welcome councillor Steve Clegg, who is the executive councillor for adult care and health, and his executive sport councillor Maria Hume, who is, sorry, who is executive sport councillor. Other participants will be introduced when we reach their item or when they first speak. The meeting is being streamed live via the county council's website, and all your comments will be remain accessible online after the meeting. With this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public and press who are watching. Can I remind everyone to switch off their mobiles, laptops and iPads, or make sure they are on silent, please? Thank you. So we can now move into the agenda. Apologies for absence replacement members. Jess, apologies, do we have some?
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Smith. We've also received apologies from councillor Annie Currie from the City of Lincoln Council, who is replaced by councillor Debbie Armiger. We've received apologies from councillor Scalisi from South Holland District Council, who will be replaced by councillor Gini. And we've received apologies from Lisboa from Health Watch, who's replaced by Dean O'Dell today. Thank you.
Thank you. Item two is declarations of members' interests. Do any members wish to declare an interest? Take that as a no. I need to declare that I have been appointed by LCC as their partner governor on the Council of Governors of North West Anglia NHS Foundation Trust. If you become aware of any interest at any point during the meeting, can you please declare it then? Thank you. Item three on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting of the 15th of October 2025. These can be found on pages three to 10 of the agenda pack. Is everyone happy with those? Do I have a proposal to accept the minutes? If nobody has any comments on them? Thank you. Thank you councillor Mackinson Saunders. Do I have a second, please? Councillor McGee, thank you. All those in favour of adopting the minutes, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Two abstentions, thank you. So the minutes are approved. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is chairman's announcements. These were circulated with the agenda as pages 11 to 20. Does anyone have a comment or any question on the announcements, please? Councillor Mackinson Saunders.
I've got two or three questions. Page 13 about primary care and community services. Improve access to primary care. We get nothing but complaints about the lack of access to primary care. I know it's very difficult for people, but it's really challenging, especially in the east of the county where we don't have enough GPs. So if there's some way when we have some speakers, we can follow that one up. It was heartening to see that at least somebody from the Lincolnshire, number four on page 14, that somebody from Lincolnshire has actually got a job with the ICB. And so Claire Raybold is looking after strategy and whatever citizen experience might be. And finally, as you know, I run a baby bank and we have a lot of children who've got speech and language problems. How do they, how do they get into this pilot? And where would they have to go to to undergo some form of help with it, please? Is it just based in Lincoln or does it go around the county?
Okay, thank you for your questions. On the first issue, I would point out that of course we do have a session, I think, upcoming on the GP service, as we do regularly. So your questions about primary care provision can be very clearly articulated at that point. And we can make sure that they're aware that that will be coming forward. As for the other matters you've raised, obviously there's no one here in the chamber to answer this for you, but we can take those, take those forward offline if you wish to. Okay, thank you. Okay, so any, any other comments on the chairman's announcements? If not, I will take them as noted. Thank you. So we now move on to item five on the agenda, cancer care in Lincolnshire. Item five was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages 21 to 46. Each year, the committee receives an update on cancer care in Lincolnshire and the Living with Cancer Programme. The last update was received on the 11th of September 2024. The presenter is Louise Jeans, Cancer Programme Director, NHS Lincolnshire ICB. And we also have the following offices in attendance to help answer questions. Gemma Barnes, who is Cancer Project Manager, NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board. Lauren Rigby, Macmillan Lead Nurse for Cancer Palliative and End of Life Care at ULHT. Rebecca Nino, Deputy Director for System Delivery, NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board. Caroline Landon, Group Chief Operating Officer and Cancer SRO at ULHT. Damian Carter, Deputy Chief Operating Officer of ULHT. And Dr Sirro Rinaldi, who is consultant hematologist at ULHT, who I believe is joining us via Teams. Right, lovely. Thank you. Would you like to talk for your presentation in about 10 or so minutes? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Jess, are you happy to share? So today, it's just a general update. There was no specific questions from last time we presented. So we've done a broad overview of the work from our current position, our performance, if you move on to the next slide, thank you. Our ULHT improvement work, screening and early diagnosis, and the Lincolnshire Living with Cancer Programme, and then the risks and issues that we currently face, if you could move on to the next slide. Thank you. So a lot of you will know already that the 10-year health plan in England has landed. It landed in July, and it replaces the NHS long-term plan. And it frames three areas for work: moving our care nearer to the home, pivoting to prevention and early detection, and digitally enabling pathways. We are expecting that the National Cancer Plan will land. We hoped it would land this autumn. It isn't. It's now landing, we think, in February, early February, we hope, in 2026, which will give us a more of a focus around the cancer programme of work. At the moment, in the 10-year health plan, it's quite high level, and we haven't got a lot of detail from that. You'll also be aware that we have the ICB blueprint, and NHS England earlier this year announced that the ICBs will reduce their running and programme costs by 50%. And there will be a shift to this target of approximately £19 per head, per weighted head of population. They continue with the National Cancer Waiting Time Standards. They still have, they've been simplified to focus on the measures that matter most to patients. That is 28-day faster diagnosis, also known as FDS, 31-day performance standard, and 62-day performance standard, if you could move on to the next slide, please. So this slide encompasses both North West Anglia Foundation Trust, North Links and Gaul, and ULTH. And I will refer to them as NWAFT, NLAG, and ULTH as I go on, otherwise I will get completely tongue-twisted. I will start with FDS. So Lincolnshire's ICB's FDS 28-faster diagnosis standard has generally been stronger than the national average this year. The system delivered constantly high results through most of the months. And they've been expect, although as expected, there's been a dip immediately after Christmas, driven by seasonal leave and reduced operating capacity, and a further softening over the summer due to staff leave and higher demand across several pathways. These fluctuations are typical and mirrored nationally. We're not an outlier. But local performance has remained broadly in line with the above and national overall position. So in essence, it's a good place. I believe we're in a good, stronger, strong place going into winter. From a 31-day standard, which is decision to treat to first treatment, we have been on par with just below the national average. Periods of pressure have occurred, most notably from theatres, capacity constraints, and episodes of radiotherapy, staff sickness. Where the dips have occurred, they have tended to be short-lived and linked with known capacity pressures and seasonal effects. The recovery actions are in place and having an impact. However, surgical capacity remains to be the biggest challenge due to the routine backlogs and trying to source additional theatre capacity. And that's seen across all three areas. 62-day is our greatest challenge. That is looking at system performance against the 62-day standard, which remains under pressure. However, it is improving. Performance has dipped over the summer with several pathways experiencing higher demand alongside capacity constraints, particularly in theatres. That demand was seen across a number of specialty areas: colorectal, gynae, urology, and skin. The system remains focused, though, on reaching the 75% target by March 2026, and that's where we're expecting to get to, excuse me. Next slide, Jess, thanks. So I'm not going to go into huge amounts of detail on this, but this is ULHT's performance based on the previous slide I've just pulled out. And I just wanted to give you assurance that we look like we've dipped in September, we have. But in October, we've seen a rise back up. We have received some tiering funding from East Midlands Cancer Alliance. And that tiering funding has been focused around the gynae, colorectal, and breast pathway, thank you very much. So that funding has been directed to those areas in ULHT, and they are now seeing an improvement directly based on that, that improvement around that money. And the funding came from East Midlands Cancer Alliance. Next slide, please, Jess. This is NWAFT's performance. I would say this has the strongest performance of the three. It's an improving position. You will see from FDS faster diagnosis that they are above the national and trajectory lines. And again, 31-day standard, although it's been below, they've had some significant issues with radiotherapy capacity and staffing. But it is now back on track, and the bottom one is 62-day. That's fluctuated up and down between over national average and the, the target position. Next slide, please, Jess. NLAG is probably the area of most poorest performance. And you can see that from the FDS, they are below the target trajectory line. 31-day has definitely dipped since the beginning, since 2024, 25. And in 62-day, we are definitely below the line. They are currently in what's called tier one. And they are being scrutinised weekly by NHS England for their performance in cancer. Their main issues are around staffing capacity and constraints to diagnostics. Next slide, Jess, please. So I'm going to focus now on ULHT. There are some targeted improvements that I believe show strong grip to try and improve both the outcomes for patients, pathways improvements, i.e. flow, and also patient experience. The following slide picks out that some of the improvement work that we've completed over the past year. Urology is focused on access and patient experience and patient and operational flow. And early results have shown faster triage for most patients going through these pathways. Enhanced post-treatment support based on patient says matter, and shorter waiting waits for biopsies and better appointment options. Performance against the 28-day standard has improved markedly, rising from 58.71 to 70.43. That is a significant rise that we don't see very quickly, and in September. And this means significantly more patients are being stepped down from the cancer pathway, i.e. not having a cancer diagnosis or receiving a confirmed diagnosis of cancer, and being cascaded on to the next part of the pathway within 28 days, which is the expectation of the national ask. We've also improved that patient experience. We went out to the public and we had 868 responses back. And 209 people have expressed an interest in taking forward and shaping work for urology pathways in the future. That was a significant amount of work. We use this under, we do these improvement work under what's called a clinical, sorry, I've lost my train of thought, CRG, which is a thank you, Clinical Reference Group. Don't know my own acronyms at the moment. My brain's gone dead, sorry. So the Clinical Reference Group is leading the programme of work for improvement for colorectal. And it's ensuring a strong focus is around clinical leadership and improving patient outcomes. The focus again has been on proving flow, particularly again at that front end, that 28-day. And initial improvements have shown a reduction in the administration process. And we've reduced that process down from nine to two days. And again, that is another significant improvement. The gynae pathway is, the system has been implementing additional clearly defined pathways to ensure that only patients with high risk of cancer remain on urgent suspected cancer pathways. And therefore, by reducing anxiety with, with, sorry, therefore, thereby reducing anxiety for those without cancer and accelerating care for those with cancer symptoms. The focus has been on the introduction of the unscheduled bleeding pathway or an HRT pathway, and the expansion of the menopause service. These aren't cancer pathways, but we've noted that we need to have alternative pathways going into this, into this work stream. And it's also included reconfiguring clinic capacity to address backlogs. The lung cancer screening, I think, will be of interest to you. That, we mentioned that last time. This is a lung cancer screening, which is a new screening programme where it offers out participants aged between 55 and 74 who have ever smoked. You will be offered an NHS lung health check. Lincolnshire this year have published the procurement opportunity in June. And with, we've gone out to a lead provider to deliver the Lung Cancer Screening Programme locally. A timeline to start inviting the eligible population in the screening programme will be this year in, from quarter four, which is January onwards from 2026. Our expectation is that 100% of the eligible population within Lincolnshire will have been invited for an initial screening appointment by quarter three in, from 2029 to 2030. And then it will, the cycle will go round again. Awaiting, we're at the moment waiting a cooldown period to announce our lead provider. Next slide, please. One other area that we focus in on, which is a big focus, is around screening and early diagnosis. And we aim to diagnose 75% of cancers in a stage one or two by 2028, up until rate approximately 50 to 55%. We've locally delivered, so faster diagnosis standard, which also ensures, which I've talked about before. And in Lincolnshire, our goal for 25, 26 is to increase early diagnosis rates from 55.7 to 59, which is a 3.3 improvement. And we're currently trying to, we're currently managing and monitoring that monthly. Examples, examples of work are locally delivered ovarian cancer awareness campaign, co-produced with individuals with lived experience in cancer, and this is planned for delivery in 2026. The delivery of enhanced GP education, foot-on referral pathways and safety netting. We've commissioned and supported practice-level initiatives that use local data to increase screening participation. And Abbey Medical Practice has been an area in Lincoln that has targeted intervention to harder-to-reach groups and improved screening of 20 women coming forward in that practice. Targeted pilots such as diabetes-linked pancreatic case finding and multilingual, sorry, pancreatic cancer case finding is currently being undertaken in a Lincolnshire PCN. And multilingual resources to support continued hosting of community engagement events, such as the recent women's health workshops at our local Lincoln mosque. If you can move on to the next slide. So the Lincolnshire Living with Programme is as important as the acute programme. And this programme aims to support both an acute, the acute pathway, but also offers an acute pathway, after the acute pathway episode, when treatment is finished and we continue to support people in the place where they want to be and in a way that they'd like to be. This is a person-centred, is person central in everything we do. If you just move on. So the Living with Cancer Programme has a focus for both acute delivery and the provider trust that focuses on treatment pathways and the wider community development pathways. By August 2025, 78% of patients were offered a holistic needs assessment within 31 days of diagnosis. Of these carried out, 100% translated into personalised care plans to support these patients living with the disease. Policies and standard operating procedures for personalised stratified follow-up PSFU pathways and holistic needs assessment and treatment summaries have proceeded through governance at ULHT and being adopted by the trust currently. And we're also leading on a sleep project regionally, where there has been a pilot in the breast pathway around the sleep apnea, which has been recognised as good practice nationally, with the team visiting the House of Lords in May this year. And then the stratified model to support available is available for people experiencing psychological distress. If you could just move on. I'm going to rattle through some of the achievements that the Living with Programme has achieved. We've had 191 patient support requests action between October 24 and August 25. We've got 13 Fighting Fit sessions in 10 locations, currently taking place weekly in Lincoln, Mabelthorpe, Skegness, Gainsborough, Grantham, Boston, Market Raisin, Sleaford, Louth and Bourne, and to date, 467 patient, people, sorry, have been referred. Plans to deliver in Stamford for quarter one of next year, which will be April. Prehabilitation, only Fighting Fit sessions to optimise fitness for treatment is available now in Lincoln and Gainsborough. And we are looking forward next year to try and broaden that offer for prehabilitation. The electronic needs assessments are now available in Lincoln PCN GP practices. Early findings show that patient satisfaction with assessment and a reduction in home visits as a result, 16 patients, and, and home visits as a result, and then 16 practices in K2 have also been offering the electronic health needs assessment by the end of this year. Next slide, please. Continued, the continued achievements, Living with Cancer Programme representation on the Anglia Water Project Group has influenced Anglia Water Strategy. The Anglia Water 25 to 30 Strategy for a Vulnerability Strategy has included the development and launch of England's first water health tariff, which is significant, and the team have been very much involved in that. We continue with co-production across Lincolnshire, and we're entering our sixth year of that. As I mentioned previously, we've had a very good take-up from a prostate cancer pathway improvement around 868 patient, people. We've secured funding for the ACE programme of 115,000 to tackle inequalities in cancer in communities. And communities have come forward to bid for that money. And, and I understand from, from Dean that one of his, Health Watch have been successful today as well. We hold pop-up events that are reached by 430 people to promote bowel cancer screening. And we have published work, including presentations and posters, in six local, national and international conferences. And we've had three articles published in peer-reviewed academic journals. Next slide, please. Future work for the Living with Team. We are part of the review of the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment. The programme continues to drive forward the development and rollout to support workplaces and pharmacies. We identify opportunities for volunteer peer support and community champion projects. We've identified additional health and wellbeing focus. And the Living with Cancer Strategy 25 to 28 is now aligned with the 10-year plan. And again, we'll align, we'll review that to align it with the cancer plan next year. We've identified opportunities for the Living with Cancer Programme in the new cluster arrangement, Derbyshire, Lincolnshire, Nottinghamshire. And we're working across the whole programme to align our wider programme of work. And then we've identified opportunities to replicate the Living with Cancer work in other long-term conditions as well. Do you want me to stop there, or do you want me to carry on with risks and issues? Okay. So just finally, I think some of the challenges that we face in Lincolnshire, both north, south, east and west, reality means that people live far from hospitals and specialist centres. It means there are long journeys for scans, treatment and follow-up, which we can lead to missed and delayed appointments, and therefore delayed, reduced outcomes in patients. We have an older population in Lincolnshire, which we're aware of, with more long-term illnesses such as lung, heart and diabetes diseases, making cancer surgery and treatments like chemotherapy and radiotherapy harder to tolerate. Health inequalities are clear in some of our coastal and more deprived central areas, including parts of East Lindsay in Boston. Screening rates for bowel, breast and cervical cancer are low in these places, and we need to work to try and improve those. Diagnostics are a pinch point. Despite greater access to diagnostics through our community diagnostic centres, we need to expand more into our community diagnostic centres to allow access for diagnostics closer to home. Not all specialist diagnostics and treatments are available within the county. Many patients travel to regional centres for diagnostics and complex surgery. And staffing remains to be one of our major challenges. Both in rural locations can make recruiting, with rural locations, it makes recruiting difficult. And to retain staff, it's much harder. And then I'll finish on, our financial pressure across the NHS is now a real risk to cancer services. The ICBs and trusts are working to reduce deficits and cut running. And that, I think, is my last slide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we now move to questions. Members of the committee, if you'd like to indicate to me or the vice-chairman if you wish to speak. Councillor Hags.
Thank you for that. It was, it was very interesting. But you, in the improvements in trajectory lines, you've not mentioned blood cancers at all, mainly leukaemia and lymph, and lymphoma. Could, have you got any updates on that, please?
On the trajectory lines, that incorporates all specialties, so the blood cancers are within that. But I'm hoping Chiro is still online, yeah, so Chiro is up, what he's, was, he's a hematologist. Chiro, do you want to come in?
Do you want to come in on that, Chiro? Sorry, I didn't have mine.
I think leukaemia is difficult because there are generally emergency presentations. So I don't think we can necessarily attribute a target, which is why it's quite often ups and downs. So those are patients that cannot be prevented. And generally, acute leukaemia presenting in emergency department as a diagnosis. Regarding lymphoma, that sit with other tumours side, I'm afraid, because quite often those patients are referred for a lump. And if the lump is in a lymph node in a superficial area, so that could be ENT if it's in our neck. It could be general surgery if it's abdomen. It could be breast if it's a lump in the axilla. So I think it gets diluted, I guess, you know, within other tumour side.
Right, thank you. Yeah, I'm just saying that because I've had non-Hodgkin's lymphoma four times, so I've got quite an interest in it. And also, what happens to cancer, to cancer patients when they go to the GP and they're missed? You know, it's something else. How do you go into, how do you pick that up? Do they end up going to A and E, or what happens?
I think there's a number of routes that they can take. They can end up going back to their GP a number of times with differing symptoms. Or they can then end up in our A and E departments through an emergency, through an emergency pathway. So until we know that they're, until we have the right referral, we often don't know about those patients. That's really difficult, but it's about
So they're going to get missed, aren't they?
I think it's about, yeah. For me, there's some education to our population to understand if we access our screening. And we, we have, we will have four, four screening programmes coming up in 2026. So we will have Oh, and we also, that's right, thank you. We also have the NSS pathway, which is the non-specific symptom pathway, which allows a GP to refer in patients for, who have vague symptoms of cancer and not specific that meet the needs of a specific colorectal or gynae pathway, for example. And that, that pathway is available to all GPs in Lincolnshire. We have it also in North West Links, down south in NWAFT, and also up north in NLAG 2. So that is an alternative pathway if, if the GP recognises there's a symptom that he can't, is not clear on.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kendrick, please.
Thanks, Chairman.
Thanks, Chairman. Just a couple of points. On the lung cancer screening, I assume we'll get an update on how the take-up's been sort of next year at some point, because I think it'd be interesting to see the stats on that when obviously you've had time to compile them.
Yeah, the expectation is that we'll award the contract shortly, and then there'll be a period to prepare to start the lung cancer screening work in February. I think the first area that we're starting with is on the East Coast, and we'll use the CDCs from ULHT to, for the, for the CT scanning. So we're trying to use local access, local provision, and so it's closer to homes for patients. And yes, we will bring it back, we'll start to monitor that.
Thanks very much. My, my other point, Chairman, was psycho-oncology access to clinical psychology. Historically, as we all know, clinical psychology's always been under pressure. How, how does that square with the fact that we, we do have pressure on clinical psychology services and, and yet we have this other service sort of tacking on to it? It'd be interesting to see if you've got the capacity to, to handle that.
So our psycho-oncology service, we have LPFT, so Lincolnshire Partnership Foundation Trust, who provide a service to our patients with cancer, who have a, a, a high need for psychological care. We have a pathway through, as the patient goes through, they will be flagged that they have a, a need for psychological review. And this year, we've, we've just agreed, so we've got an additional year's funding to fund LPFT to do the work for psycho-oncology. And we're doing a full review under the Clinical and Care Directorate, as it stands at the moment, to look at provision, service provision for psycho-oncology and then what's the need for Lincolnshire. So a demand and capacity piece that looks exactly at what's our demand across our Lincolnshire patch and what provision do we need to have within the, the service. So we're doing that piece now, that's being started literally next week. So again, I can bring that back next time.
That'd be interesting, because obviously historically there's always been waiting list issues with access to psychology services. So that'd be interesting to see the, the outcome of that. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Lee, please.
Thanks, Chair. Before I speak, can I say, when people speak, and it's not a criticism, could you pull your microphones round? Just because I've put my hearing aids in and I still struggle to hear. I'm getting old, but it was, it was a really good report, thank you. I'm very interested for two reasons, actually, and you'll have to bear with me if I struggle a bit. I did work on Hemswell Ward for two years, so I've, I've done the cancer clinic and gynae clinics. I, I did all of those, but as well as that, my daughter died of breast cancer. She didn't live in Lincolnshire, she was treated in Notts, and she went through City Hospital, and I've got nothing but praise for Nottingham City Hospital for her care. I think the GP care left a little bit to be desired, and one of my questions is, my first question's around that. I'm really pleased about the NHS ten-year plan and the person-centred care. The problem that I had when she, she deteriorated very quickly, she was only ill for thirteen months from diagnosis, and the last six months or so, she, her deterioration was such that she clearly needed a greater level of analgesia, but I couldn't get the GP to do a home visit because the GP was too far away. For all the personal reasons, she'd stayed with that GP, and they wouldn't come out, so I'd got someone laid in a bed very ill that didn't want to go to a GP surgery. So the fact that it's going to be closer to home, I can only say that I'm so, so pleased about that. She was seriously on paracetamol and, and Brufen when she should have been on something much, much stronger. And I found that very lacking, so I'm, I'm really glad. I'd like to know that the link between the GP and the hospital would be so much closer and, and the working together better going forward. You talked about support for psychological distress. Do you do a really thorough assessment? Because some people are really good at putting on a front, you know, and saying that they're coping when they're really not. And I'd like to know as well if families, I don't mean me here, I mean husbands, childrens, because they were in the equation, are they signposted to some sort of support? Because in our case, that didn't happen. Page thirty-five, you talk about health inequalities, deprivation, language barriers. I'm really pleased to see that bit because I think they exist countywide, it's not just in places. I represent somewhere in Lincoln, but out in the sticks, those needs are just as great. And I'd like to know that that's support. You've talked about the mosque. Does something similar exist for people of Eastern European background, you know? Is that something that's wider? And does it go out into the sticks supporting people? And finally, the bit on page thirty-six, travelling to appointments, I used to find at cancer clinic at Lincoln County, people travelled an awful long way. This, this is going back to twenty sixteen, but they travelled a long way to those appointments. And some of them were like nine o'clock appointments. And if you're someone who's got cancer and you've woken up feeling really nauseous to get, to do an hour and a half across Lincolnshire to get to an early appointment, you know, can be really challenging. Is that recognised? Is it dealt with? And I'll tell you what, that clinic used to sometimes go on past one o'clock. It was a right nightmare, it's such a long clinic. And people, the tailback of appointments, they could be running way, way behind. And I think I'd like to know that the staffing has improved and, and the scheduling and everything so that those delays don't actually happen, or that they're managed a little bit better than what they are, and maybe people are checked to see if they want a cup of tea and if they're all right, and that, just really practical things. But in the main, this, this is a really good report, and I like it, and thank, thank you so much. You can see that improvements have been made in the last decade.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. Oh, I sound like I'm echoing now. But I'm really sorry that you've had a, a poor experience. I do take that. There were a number of questions in there, so I'm going to try and cover them off if I can. So from a psychological need and the assessment, what do we do? There's an H and A that is done, and they do, they look at psychological distress and they score it with the patient, and it's done along the pathway at a number of points. So if a patient, both my parents have both suffered with cancer, and I urged them to go and talk to one of their CNSs or their cancer care coordinators, which should follow you along your treatment journey, and they do in ULHT, and I'm sorry to hear that you had a different experience. And that CNS will be your point of contact with the cancer care coordinator, who are very much part of that treatment pathway. The, we also have the MAC centres for the resources for children.
Can I, can I just say at that point?
Yes.
I don't, I don't mean to be critical. In the main, the treatment was wonderful.
Okay.
It's just the little things that come out when you've actually been that way, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. It's the, the little things that make a huge difference, though, when you're on those, on those treatment pathways. The signposting for children would be through the MAC centres, and we have MAC centres at Lincoln, Boston and Grantham. And we also have, that was it, I, did I cover off everything?
Just about the clinics, because whilst they were, everyone meant well, but honestly, it was like if you could get there, if you were feeling sick, people would get there and say, God, I feel so ill having travelled that far. And, and it was the fact that they ran so far behind and so late, those clinics. Thank you.
Don't have any comments on it, I'm afraid. I think it's, it, it's unfortunately difficult to, I suppose, manage. I don't know whether Caroline, do you want to come in?
Yeah, no, and absolutely hear you, and I know we do have that, we do have that with, with some of our clinics. I'm going to take your comments back to the team and review that clinic, because I'll be really open, I haven't looked at it, because we don't want any of our patients, particularly our significantly unwell patients, sitting in waiting rooms, waiting when they need to see a clinician quickly. So leave that with, with me, I'll go back and look at those clinic waiting times and come back to you outside. Thank you.
I think Dr Rinaldi wants to come in on teams.
Yeah, thank you. Just, just a couple of points. One, one is that we, we obviously establish a co-oncology assessment area for, for, but also for that purpose. So, you know, with direct access, you know, for patients that are complaining of complication, you know, to avoid admission via emergency department or any of our acute entry. It's still not perfect, you know, we need to expand, but I think that is the right place to be. And also, you know, we're trying to avoid, you know, we now hybrid virtual clinics and face-to-face, you know, quite a lot of patients during follow-ups can be contacted remotely, and if we need to send any medication, you know, we can send it directly so they don't need to come to hospital to pick it up. There is still a lot of work to do, but I think the addition of those virtual service and direct admission will help.
Thank you. councillor Jeanie, next, please.
Thank you. Mine's just a simple question. How was the rationale worked to get the age for screening for lung treatments arrived at being fifty-five to seventy-four? Is that the most common age, or is it considered after seventy-four people don't get cancer? Thank you.
So I, we, I think we got this question last time, and we, it's set nationally. However, the, the significance of seventy-four-year-olds being able to survive the treatment options are, I think that's how they, they've looked at it. Now, it's not, we haven't set this, this is nationally set, and we were asked to, to deliver this between fifty-five and seventy-four. I get that seventy-four-year-olds, seventy-five-year-olds are fit and well, but there has to be a cutoff somewhere.
Yeah, well, I'm an ex-smoker, heavy smoker for twenty-something years, about twenty-five years, and I am well past your cutoff date, so I don't consider myself incapable of, but...
You don't look like you're above the cutoff date.
Seventy-eight next month. But I sort of seem, it's quite strange that I can be excluded from any checkups. Not that I feel I need one, but it would be nice to know that it was available to other people. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Morgan, please.
Thank you. Can you expand? Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation and all the work that's going on in the background. councillor Lee stole some part of my question, actually, because it was about patients who have to regularly travel for, for their care. What are we doing to, to, overall to reduce that? And we know it is a countywide issue, particularly concerning that it's affecting our lower income areas the worst. So what are we putting in place specifically to target that? I know patient transport comes into this big time, and I'm just wondering how we're working with the transport providers. And the other issue, I mean, links to out-of-ours, actually, where somebody may have an, an emergency. We're finding people can't get to A and E at night, for example, there's no transport provision. So I'm just wondering if there's any kind of, that kind of like twenty-four hour, what we're doing to support people out of ours? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just answer partly, and then I think I'll defer to Caroline. So from a, from a treatment perspective, the mobile chemo bus is available, and that goes out to the areas across Lincolnshire. That doesn't obviously cover off all treatments, it's, it's, there's a treatment regime that they, they take on the bus that they can't do. So they can't do all the treatments on the bus. And we've obviously got from a diagnostic place, the four, will be four CDCs across the system, which will be Skegness, Lincoln, Grantham, and then Boston's coming online. But Caroline, do you want to add anything?
Thanks, Lou.
Thank you.
You stole some of my thunder and the CDCs. Our, our absolute focus, and you've probably heard it before, I've heard it in my thirty years in the NHS, is on moving services out of the hospital into the community. And I think members might have heard from my colleague Darren Fragley about the work that we're doing in Lincolnshire. We are absolutely committed to ensuring patients don't need to travel to our buildings, because in this day and age, they shouldn't have to. We should be taking services to their door, regardless of what that service is, but particularly if it's cancer services, and provisioning outreach services. And if you need a diagnostic, you come to one of our CDCs. But there's also something around developing mobile diagnostics, diagnostics, which we're looking at, but also empowering our GPs to access diagnostics and sending people into primary care to actually do that, and provisioning the equipment to do that. It's, it's an integral part of our strategy, not for five years, not for ten years, but for the next three years, we're in year one of doing that. We're nowhere near where we need to be this year, but next year we have plans in place, working with our GP colleagues to do exactly what you're asking, which is to take care out to our residents, and to absolutely maximise the use of our CDCs, putting them in areas which are easier for people to go to. Transport, I can't answer you on, but I would always say that if you need to come to ED, phone an ambulance if there is no other alternative. But Lou, I don't know if you were able to update around any of the transport contract? Apologies, I don't know that.
I'm afraid not, no, sorry.
Maybe we can come back to you on that, Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, councillor Morgan.
Thank you. It's particularly encouraging to hear about the, the mobile units going out into those communities. Do we have any idea of how many patients go to A and E out of ours, were linked to cancer issues or needing treatment? Do we have any idea? We do get presentations, actually, we might be more aware of what's going on with transport than you. There is a hole there at night.
I don't have...
In particular, unfortunately, because it can cost eighty pounds in a taxi to get to A and E at night from some of our areas. People can't afford it, which is hugely concerning, but I just wondered...
I don't have numbers to hand, but I can, we do monitor those numbers.
I'm thinking it might help to understand and maybe drive, get some drivers in behind, improving that area. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I've just, to add to that as well, so obviously if you're receiving systemic anti-cancer treatment, you have access to a twenty-four-hour triage line where you will speak to a specialist nurse. So they will actually do a triage of what you're ringing with and any of those toxicities or symptoms, and they have like a tool that they then utilise, so they can then advise you of what the best route is. And obviously, if attending an ED department out of ours is not the best route, we will then put something else in place. We would only advise you to attend ED if it was severely life-threatening and you needed to. Otherwise, what we would look to do is utilise our oncology assessment units, which are then open in the day. We've got their Monday to Friday at Lincoln, and at the minute, we have got one Monday to Friday at Boston, when we have the staff in for that. So we would bring the patients to those assessment units rather than them, sending them to the emergency departments, unless obviously they absolutely did need to attend the emergency department, then that is where they go to, if that helps.
But I think we hear you about that, about that, because I'm in bed, I can't drive, I've got no relatives and I can't afford eighty quid. So let, let's take that away, because I absolutely see that that would be awful. So we'll take that away, can't promise a solution, but take it, because I haven't thought about that, and I had to see if there's anything we can do.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. councillor Armadie, next, please.
What is the current percentage of cancer patients in Lincolnshire who are offered the holistic needs assessment? And on average, what is the waiting time between diagnosis, receiving personalised care and a support package?
So I think in the report, it says seventy-five percent are offered the holistic needs assessment. And then of those seventy-five, a hundred percent go on to have a care plan set. Is that, was that your question?
Is there a, a waiting time for that? Are they waiting long for that?
No. So the time for the H and A to be done is less than thirty-one days. So from the day you admitted into the hospital or to the, you get picked up on the pathway, that you, the, the team who you're under, breast, gynae, whatever, have thirty-one days to start that holistic needs assessment. Often, those holistic needs assessment are based on a number of things, spiritual, psychosocial, other aspects of holistic care. And they will, depending on the need, the unmet need, they will then plan in further holistic needs assessments and reviews of the care plan set to allow you to, to, to continue as you were before you came in with your cancer diagnosis. So there is no wait as such, but it's down to the teams in the specialties to do that.
Okay, thank you. Can I have councillor Cullen, next, please?
Thank you, Chair. May I please echo councillor Lee and councillor Morgan?
May I please echo councillor Lee and councillor Morgan sentiments on the report? Thank you very, very much, very detailed and very informative, thank you. I note that it details pathways and treatment around urology, breast, lung cancer, ovarian cancers. It is quite clearly detailed that more people under the age of 40 die from brain tumours and brain cancer. I don't see any, anything addressing this. Also, when you talked about the psychological help and triage, just a little bit of background, I don't want to go into too much detail. My son was diagnosed in late December 2020 with brain cancer. And he lived in Nottingham, so he fell under the Nottinghamshire NHS trust. He moved back home just for ease of care. And we didn't, even though we approached his GP at the time to help with loneliness, which he experienced extremely, extremely deeply, we didn't really get any, anything until the last six weeks of his life, what turned out to be six weeks of his life, where he was put on palliative care and the doctors turned around and said, there's nothing more that we can do medically. So I just wanted to ask what, because your report to me seems to concentrate more on the older population, not on children and young adults. I'm sorry if, you know, if I'm.
So I can, so firstly, again, I'm really sorry you've had that terrible experience. We don't commission the children's cancer pathways. So that's why I haven't reported on it. That's commissioned at the moment by specialised commissioning and the regional team. So that's why children are not included in this, but young people are, so from the age of 18 plus. A couple of years ago now, I can't remember whether it was before COVID or after COVID, we did a brain pathway, straight test pathway, which looks at a diagnostic test, an MRI. So the GP were referring into, direct to MRIs. But, so that's continued in Lincolnshire. The issue we have with brain and the reason why we probably don't spend as much time on it as colorectal, breast or gynae is that I think we only have one or two, maybe three persons per year come through that pathway. So it's a very, it's a very small pathway. I don't know whether Chiro wants to just come in on anything, has he got his hand up at all? I'm hoping he might phone a friend, has he?
Yeah, so I was gonna, I was gonna say that unfortunately, most of the treatment for, you know, brain primary will be in a tertiary centre. So we're not going to provide that, we don't do surgery and we don't provide neurosurgery, which is inevitably, you know, part of the treatment when they are considered as operable. And so that is taken out from, you know, the Lincolnshire service as such, because you know, apart from diagnostic, you know, we then will send them to either Nottingham or Sheffield for that kind of treatment. So what then remain with us is secondary, so patients with primary from elsewhere, a different tumour site, you know, with metastatic disease in the brain, but that would be chemotherapy and palliative treatment. So I think numbers are small and I think we are, we are not responsible for the bulk of the, of the treatment because inevitably that will sit with a tertiary centre specialised commissioning.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you for that. Just like to inform and let you all know, there is a new centre of excellence opening as part of the QMC in Nottingham. Primarily concentrating on finding not cure, but finding help for treating glioblastoma, which is the tumour that my son passed away. But thank you very, very much, thank you for that.
Thank you. I just wanted to come in a bit more about the psychological support for you, if that's okay. So all of our cancer care coordinators and our clinical nurse specialists are now trained to level two psychological support. So they've had that education and training to be able to offer that support to our patients and pick that up and recognise that. That then does make us quite good at then recognising when they need that higher level for support and referring in. And like Louise mentioned, we do have the Macmillan psychologist service that support, but we also have access to MCavs, which is across East Midlands, and they provide that video therapy service. Across ULTH, we've got a really good patient support groups as well, and we do have a brain cancer support group as well for patients. So there is a lot of access for that kind of support of people who are going through similar situations also to benefit our patients. But we recognise how difficult this time is and I'm really sorry for what you and your son went through, because it is really hard and it is really lonely and it is a really complex journey and that can make it really difficult. So we do have those bits in place.
And, and I think as well, it's so great to hear all that, but again, it comes back to, we've got all of that in the hospital. I think if your GP could have been able to access that or have some of that in their GP service, or there's some way that we strengthen that link, and I know our primary care colleagues are so up for that, because it's fabulous, isn't it? But you needed it at home, didn't you? You needed it from the GP and that's what we've got to fix, is getting that, taking it out, taking the people out, not just the service, the people out to deliver that personalised care. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it was just unlucky that Josh fell through the cracks because he was being treated at QMC. So, but thank you all very, very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I have councillor McGee next please.
Hi, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to say that this is an excellent report and to thank my colleagues in the room for sharing their personal experiences, because I think that adds a wealth of sort of an extra level to this debate today. So thank you for that. I just have a couple of questions. The first one is, because we can see through this report quite frequently, that theatre capacity is an issue. And it talks, and I'm a layperson, so it talks about in-sourced theatre capacity as a means of dealing with that. And I just wondered what that meant in practice. And on page 31, there is a reference to the fact that the increase in fit testing has obviously put strains on the colorectal pathways. And it does note that the workforce capacity has not been increased in line with that demand. So are there plans to increase that workforce capacity anytime soon? Because obviously a big part of this paper is about pushing for screening and obviously if we're going to have more screening, we are going to have more demand. So is that something that's, you know, being considered currently?
So I'm not an expert on theatre capacity, but I'll defer that. The fit testing this year changed to the threshold for fit testing change, which lowered it, I think somehow, is simplest way of lowering it. And we're getting more patients through. Are we increasing the capacity? At the moment, we're not, but I think what we need to do is look about how we're working and using the existing resource in a better way. It's not always for me about increasing that resource, it's about working with the teams to understand what they're doing and how we do it differently. I referenced in the paper that we've reduced for the colorectal pathway from the administrative element of the front end of the pathway, we've gone from nine days to two days. That's significant. And that allows you, so the workforce we've dedicated for that front end is there and ready and waiting to go. But actually, we've taken the time out, which is, which is, which has helped the pathway. So it's not, I do think, everyone thinks it's about staff, but it's not always about staff, it's about how we're working.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. And it's also about the more successful bowel screening is, the less complex interventions we'll need to have and how hopefully we'll start to divert that resource from that back end, complex delivery of care towards that much more front end screening and prevention. And again, supporting our GP colleagues in a much more real way with actual people, not just service transfer, people transfer. Theatres, we haven't been great with our utilisation, it's one of our most expensive resources and we absolutely need to make sure we maximise it because it costs a lot of money to deliver that service. We've been working with colleagues from EY for the past, I want to say four months, and seeing some great results. What they've really helped us to do is rationalise our processes, because we weren't great at being tied on our process management from our getting patients sent to theatre, getting patients pre-op to ensure they were right for theatre, ensuring that we had the right equipment, ensuring we had the right staff, we weren't ticking those boxes consecutively. Started to do that now and we've seen a steady increase in our theatre utilisation. Still not where we want to be, but we're absolutely on the right track to it and utilising our resource differently. Our theatre staff are undergoing a training programme, so instead of being just specialised, they're actually able to cover across the whole suite, but also starting to think more in a way of, if you look at some of the London trusts, they got barn theatres, they're amazing. You go in there, it's based on the military concept and you'll have four different procedures going on in one room because of the airflow management. Now, we can't barn because of our estate, I wish we could, but what we can do is we can take some of those concepts around barning. So we start to really sweat that asset so we get more patients through so that we can deliver care in a more proactive way. So that's the work we're currently doing. And I don't know if we come here to show you our elective work streams, but if we do, we'll be able to demonstrate to colleagues that we're absolutely seeing that work improve so we don't have to bring in additional capacity, which tends to be different teams, because we don't go and use other capacity, it's different teams. But there's also capacity out in primary care. I can't remember the name of the health centre, but there's a health centre that's got a theatre. And what we're trying to do is, and it's a cultural issue we've got to get past, is get our staff to go out and work in that theatre, do minor ops out in that theatre. So lots of plans going on around that theatre estate.
Thank you for that. That's a full answer. I will say with regards to workforce capacity within the colorectal pathway though, it wasn't just me asking to have extra bodies thrown at the problem. It does note in the paper that workforce capacity has not increased in line with this additional demand, which presents a risk to timelines and operational resilience if sustained. So the paper itself notes that if we have this continued increase, we are going to hit a breaking point where we will need to be thinking about new staff. So I suppose it's just a reassurance that that is being watched and monitored and thank you. And I fully celebrate using our community resources better to be able to deal with some of these problems. You know, I'm in West Lindsay, so Gainsborough, you know, has a local hospital that is underused and I'm quite sure all of, all of us sat round here will have a similar situation. So thank you very much for your answers.
Just to come back on the point in the paper, at the moment we are, we're running through the clinical reference group that is monitoring all aspects of the pathway from zero to 62 days to allow us to look at that. I think that it references it as a risk, but we need to work differently to be able to, because there is, there is no open pot of money unfortunately. And so therefore we've got to use our existing assets.
Thank you. I have councillor Wimperst next please.
Thank you, Chair. And again, thank you all for a really excellent and detailed report. Now, this question's going to be a bit odd, because I know it's probably, sorry, it's referring to the national standards. It's probably something you can change obviously, but I don't know how I'm expected to believe that the faster diagnosis standard of 28 days is meant to be faster than 14 days? It doesn't seem to make any sense there. And then we've got another standard, which is three days more than the 28, which is 31. So why not scrap the 31 days, just have the 28 day? And in my, to my mind, with some cancers, I mean, the 62 day standard, how do we know that we're not putting someone on that standard who's then going to have an aggressive form of cancer or something like that, that could take it from say a stage two to a stage four and then terminal diagnosis within that month, that we're making a way extra? I just want a little bit of a elaboration on that, please.
Yeah, happy to do that. So the two week wait standard was set to see a consultant in two weeks. The faster diagnosis standard is to either give you a cancer diagnosis or step you down off that cancer pathway. So it, it's all.
But it's still adding two further weeks on to the two weeks.
But you wouldn't have got, sorry, you won't get a diagnosis in the two week wait. The first appointment was in within two weeks. So your first appointment, whether it was a diagnostic test or seeing a consultant, you were given, that was what the two week wait was based on. The 28 day is allowing you to get, see somebody, get a diagnostic test and get that diagnostic test assessed and reviewed and either diagnosed or undiagnosed.
Okay, so that makes sense, but then why have the 31 day standard as well? What's the point in that? We might as well just keep the 28 days.
So once you have a cancer diagnosis, the 31 is the 31 is where you, you have a decision to treat. So you have 31 days from the deciding point of treatment to get your treatment within 62 days. So that's why they, because ultimately you could be sat, you could be delayed on that pathway and ultimately you could be past 62 days, you could be at 100 days, but we still work along the basis of getting a 31 day standard in so that the decision to treat allows you to get that treatment in within 31 days. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it does make a little bit more sense, but it just seems still, even with 62 days, still seems a little bit.
And then zero to 62, once the 62 is the actual day that you have your, you have your treatment and then the treatment will continue, sorry, yeah. So the treatment will then continue after that point, but the 62 days, so that three months allows you to get in, get seen, get diagnosed. If you don't have a cancer, you get off it. If you do have a cancer, you get treated and you continue.
Okay, thank you. But I mean, with all due respect, some people don't have that sort of 90 days from the point of where they've got it.
No, and I think that's the reason why we're here, that's the reason why we're, you know, sharing with you all this information. I think we're, we're getting closer to that 62 day, it's an improving position. 28 day is certainly improving with the access to diagnostics and CDCs. It's, but it's marginal gains with shaving days off pathways.
Understood, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I have councillor Mackinson Saunders next please.
Thank you, Mr. I thought red was switching it off. I just want to say, well done for what you've done at Lincoln, that's really good news. I used to take my friend for chemotherapy and the chemotherapy suite was one of the happiest places and we had such fun on Friday afternoons and it was lovely because it made her cancer journey eventually had a sad ending, but it made it so much better. But thank you very much indeed for that. But my concern is, coming from Laft, people get sent up to Grimsby and you've told us this morning that they're failing in their standards, basically. I can give you all sorts of examples I know from Laft. I know an elderly farmer who, if you can tell me what his problems are, he's got nobody to phone up at Grimsby Hospital, hasn't got, doesn't appear to have a Macmillan nurse, there's no cancer, whatever you said, cancer care coordinator, nothing. And it's not because he's dopey or losing his marbles, it's his daughter has taken him to the hospital. He hasn't got any of that, he's not sleeping at night, he's in great pain and I don't see why anybody should be subjected to that. So really what I want to get to the bottom of is, how long is it going to take for Grimsby, and it's not all departments at Grimsby, I admit, how long is it for them to get back on track? Because the people that live in my part of East Lindsay rely on Grimsby. We don't really get a choice of where we go to. I'd rather go to Lincoln. But, and it is concerning to us, so if you've got a timeline, that'd be useful, thank you.
I don't have a timeline, I'm afraid, but we do work, we work with NWA and NLAG in the same way to understand. Our percentage of patients that go up to Lincolnshire is in the pack and I think it was 4%. So to NLAG, first outpatient, sorry, A and E, 1 to 4, 6% outpatients, 4.3% and then any non-electives, 8%. So that's the flow of patients out. So I, we, yes, for cancer, we, we probably, it's a, it's a work in progress, I would say. We probably need to work closer with our commissioning colleagues in NLAG to be able to say, what pressure are you putting on to your trust colleagues? In Lincolnshire, in, sorry, in, yeah, in Lincolnshire, we are very different. You see us together today, we come round the table, we, I have a, I have an improvement background, it's not about a big stick. For me, it's about how do we make it better for the patient? And I think that's the difference, maybe that they don't have that relationship between the ICB and the trust in North Links and Gaul, I'm afraid. But I don't have a timeline, apologies.
Thank you. We are of course going to hear from NLAG in person in January at this committee, so you will have the opportunity to ask them directly. you will have the opportunity to ask them directly then. Thank you. I have councillor Lee now please.
Thank you for letting me come back. I just wanted to say, I think the fact that two of us have been affected so personally by this and other people just shows you that this is probably much more of a common experience than any of us think. I think it's notable too as well and it's only fair to you, you're Lincolnshire and our experience was in knots, so we need to make that, you know, that distinction. I found the hospitals absolutely fine in knots. I just wanted to say as well, I was an MP for a bit and when I got down there, I was at every Westminster Hall debate on cancer you ever saw and I was an ambassador for breast cancer now as well, so I got really, really involved in it. And they had this aim at the time that no, by 2050, no woman would die of breast cancer. And I don't know if we'll hit that or not, but I have to say, listening to this today and the fact that the treatment's going out in the community, because that's what's key. I think if you've got a GP that's joined up with a hospital and it all falls smoothly, you're really lucky, but I think we were perhaps just a bit unlucky rather than that being the norm. And, you know, I think things are definitely heading in the right direction and I'm really heartened by this report. Thank you.
But I think it's not about the GP being linked with us, it's us linking with them. Too long we've held all the power, we need to establish those relationships. And for me, I can't forget about that old boy in Loth now, because he's a Lincolnshire resident and there's something around, I can't sit here either and say hand on heart that there's not residents who come under our care, care that are not sat like that. So it's, you know, I think when you come and hear these stories, it's really powerful and there must be something that we can do for that guy in Loth.
Can I, can I just say, I brought my daughter home to die, I looked after her for the last three weeks. And do you know what, I changed a GP about two, couple of months before that and it was a different experience, it really was.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments and I have councillor Morgan again please.
Thank you very much for letting me back again. First of all, I think it's rather relevant, we talk about the psychological support for the patients, what about their carers? What are we offering them? Because I can't imagine an experience worse than being a mother having to care for, care for their child in that situation, or father, or even child, sibling. The other question I've got is, while we're looking at trying to deal with the symptoms and dealing with treatment, is there any research going on into how Lincolnshire as a county stands, say nationally, on cancer rates and what are the identified likely causes of cancer? Because I have heard going back some time that actually we've got a higher level of cancer in our county, I don't know if that's true or not, than other parts of the country. And I'd be really interested to know what's going on regarding, I can guess what some reasons might be. And we are aware, we have a whole new generation, we talk about smoking, we've got this whole new generation coming up vaping. Have we got any research to link vaping to cancer? I'd just be really interested to see what we're doing on that front and that obviously is young people.
So psychological care for partners and carers, the CNS will support the family as much as they can. There will be access through the GP as well to be referred, but again, there are waiting times for that. The incidence, I think that's what you asked, around the incidence rate, is it higher in Lincolnshire? It's not necessarily higher, but I think we have improved screening uptake in some of our areas. So the more you screen, the more you're going to find and that basically, that's where we want to go. So I would want our incidence rate to be higher, but I, I don't know what you're referring to, so I can't comment exactly on what that incidence is or which particular specialty it is. But I will, we can look at incidence rates for all specialty areas and we can bring that back next time potentially. And then vaping, it's a new anomaly, isn't it? I really, you know, advising children not to smoke, not to vape, not to do anything bad is, you know, it's very easily accessible I think. We don't know the consequences of that at the moment.
Thank you. I have nobody else waiting to speak, just one question of my own if I may. There's always references in these reports constantly that come to this committee about health inequalities and deprived east coast communities and yours is no exception. What can you tell us about how you are ensuring that screening rates are improved in those areas and people do have, get awareness of the need to look after themselves and to seek care and seek screening at the earliest opportunity?
So we do have some targeted pieces of work that have been ongoing and I think I referenced them in the report, they're certainly referenced in the full report, but I know that we've got targeted, so the ACE programme, which is, I can't remember what ACE stands for, so apologies, but the ACE programme has got, we've procured £115,000 and we've gone out to communities to try and improve the inequalities and access for people. That might be on a treatment pathway, it might be after pathway, but it's going out into communities to find out what they, what their need is. I think it's often easy to look at numbers and then make, translate that into what their need is, but actually what I've learned over the last nine years of managing cancer is that going out to the population, listening to people's stories is where you will need to direct and divert. I think as we've gone through Covid, we learnt a huge amount about vaccinations and our population and our communities and not coming forward. They, those, those things that we learnt, we need to lift and shift into other programmes of work. So Steve manages the early diagnosis programme, the vax and screening. We work really closely together to allow us to look at what that, what that's telling us in the, what our communities are telling us.
And I also think it's experts by experience in the community and lived experience because I come from a deprived background and, you know, my mum and dad would have gone to the doctor with a headache and if the doctor said, we're going to cut your leg off, they would have come out legless because they wouldn't have been able to challenge the doctor. And there's something around though, if you're in my community and you've got lived experience and I feel more able to talk to you because you haven't got that professional mask. There's huge pieces of work that have been done down in London around this, around how we need to start doing knowledge transfer within the community to community leaders, people within the community who are respected, so that people who are scared to access, just don't know how to access, but are scared, have somebody they can trust before they get to that white coat. So I think, you know, that work's really important around that community expertise.
Thank you very much for that, very much appreciated. Thank you very much for your presentation, thank you for answering the questions. Sorry, councillor McGee, you wish to come back?
I would, yeah, because you just made me think. So I am actually a peer support worker working for LPFT and come from that position of lived experience. And is there scope within everything that you're doing to build in peer support into what you're doing? Because that's exactly what you're talking about, is that, you know, as a non-clinician, people open up and they speak and then that benefits clinicians because you can pass all of that information on and encourage somebody to access services. So are there plans to be looking at that kind of role within services currently in Lincolnshire?
So absolutely from in our perspective, my colleague Darren is working on that because it's what you say, it's not wanting to feel stupid. I feel it and I've worked with doctors for 35 years, not just picking on doctors, chiro, but, but that's exactly the work that we're trying to work, to do, but we're not the leaders on that. I'm going to, I'm going to pass on to Lou around ICB colleagues and the work they're doing.
So I think co-production is key to this and co-producing, co-designing. When we now are picking up the pathways and the pieces of work that we're doing, we're asking the population, so the example we gave was in prostate, we had 800 and something people come back to us, it was an amazing response and a response that I don't think I've ever known. So there are people out there who want to engage, they want to change healthcare, they want to get involved and we need to, we need to harbour that. That's part of what we need to do, taking forward.
Thank you. So thank you very much to the presenters and thank you for the passion and conviction with which you answered our questions, that was noted. I now have to move to a proposal. So I suggest, my suggested proposal is as follows. One, that the presenters be thanked for their presentation on cancer care in Lincolnshire and for answering the committee's questions. Two, that the contributions of all staff to the cancer care and living with cancer programmes be recognised. And three, that the committee receives a further report on cancer care in Lincolnshire in a year's time. Do I have a proposer please? Thank you councillor Wimperst. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Hakes, thank you.
The second bit of your proposal actually says in Lincolnshire because I don't think that we are getting the right service from Grimsby and I'd hate them to think we were supporting them by saying they were giving a good...
Thank you, that's noted. Sorry, can we move to a vote please? All those in favour please show. All those against. Any abstentions? Fine, thank you, that's approved and thank you again. It's now 20 past 11, would the committee like to take a 10-minute break or would you like to continue on to the next item?
A few people have to break.
Break? Okay, we'll have a 10-minute break and resume back at 11:30 promptly. Apologies for you waiting, our presenters for the next item. Okay, thank you. The meeting now resumes, thank you very much. Thank you to our presenters for their patience. So, the next item on the agenda is item six, Lincolnshire Integrated Care System Winter Plan 2025-26. This was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages forty-seven to seventy-eight. Each year, the committee considers the winter planning arrangements for the local NHS. For nineteen twenty-four twenty-five winter, this item was considered on the sixth of November twenty-twenty-four. The presenter is Rebecca Nino, Deputy Director for Systems Devry NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board. We also have Stephen Clapton, Head of Immunisation and Screening NHS Lincolnshire ICB, in attendance to help answer questions. And I noticed that Caroline has stayed, thank you very much Caroline for staying on for this item as well. Would you like to present your report, please, in ten or so minutes? Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'm absolutely delighted to be here yet again, as yet again, some of you have heard me year on year, so apologies, but as the System Lincolnshire Winter Director. So it's my privilege to present this to you on behalf of both the NHS and the local council. It is a report that we bring together on behalf of all of the partners to help us navigate through the winter period. So, this report has gone through a number of stages, you will see, and it is here for your consideration. It is an iterative report, and we will take your feedback on board and review the report as you would expect us to do as we go through. As you've seen from the previous item, we work really closely together in Lincolnshire. We are one team, that's why Caroline has stayed, sitting next to me, as one of the key partners. And because of being able to work together over the past three years, we've navigated winter really well. Not perfectly, there's always things we can do, but compared to other parts of England, we have navigated winter very well, and as such, we are commended by NHS England for the work that we do in Lincolnshire in keeping our patients safe. That means this year, we did not attract a winter assurance visit. Those of you that have sat through my previous presentations will know, each year, our NHS England colleagues come into Lincolnshire, into each system, to do an assurance visit. We didn't attract that this year, because they have confidence in us. That said, as I go through the presentation, you will see there are a number of stress tests, as we call them, that this plan has gone through for assurance, and let me assure you, we are not complacent based on the fact that we have not had that assurance visit. So, for those of you that have seen the report before, you'll notice it's quite a familiar document, we've kept it the same for the past three years, changing, of course, the content, when I say the same, I'm talking about the layout. And the report itself is based around three key areas, one around attendance avoidance, so you've heard already in the previous item, around how reaching out to people in their own homes, care closer to home, care in the community is key. So, avoiding attendances where possible. If people do reach our services, then, again, returning them back, where it's safely to do so, into their own homes, into their own environment, so reducing admission into our services. And then reducing length of stay, so making sure people are in our inpatient services for as little time as possible, and where it is safe to do so, continuing their care, again, as close to their home as possible. You'll see within the plan that the plan makes a number of assumptions, and this plan, you will see, we started work on winter in July, actually, this year, probably on the hottest day of the year, but as always, planning is key to success. But what you'll see is the plan is based on a number of assumptions, those assumptions being around what generally causes the stress within the NHS over the winter period, which is typically respiratory viruses, and the cold weather linked to that, which often causes the slip trips and falls, and deterioration in people's health and wellbeing, particularly those with long-term health conditions. The assumptions are based on what happened, usually in the southern hemisphere, in the flu season, and at the time of writing, we were led to believe that that was a fairly standard flu season. You would have seen, as I have, in the national press, some concerns around this may be a very difficult flu season for us, and this plan has been stress-tested against three scenarios, one being a baseline scenario, where we find ourselves currently, one being in what we call surge, and one being super surge. And we're confident that the super surge scenarios and the options we have within that option will be sufficient if this is a really difficult influenza season. Locally, we do have some flu cases at the moment, but we are certainly not seeing the numbers currently that would indicate a really difficult flu season, but that said, it is only the middle of November and the winter is still a long period ahead of us. Prevention is the absolute cornerstone to this plan, to help us protect the NHS, and therefore, everybody that knows me well will know that I will appeal to anybody listening and anybody in this room, if you have not had the vaccinations that you're entitled to, whether that be flu, the Covid vaccination, shingles vaccination, RSV vaccination, please do access those vaccinations, that will give you the best protection personally, as we navigate winter, but also help protect the NHS as we move through this period of time. You will see, in the plan, there are a number of schemes, those schemes are detailed in what we will bring in to help us navigate through. What I would say, there is no additional national ring-fence money for the NHS for winter, we knew that as we started the year, so what we did locally was, we withheld a small pot of money from our annual allocations that we've withheld for winter. So we are able, unlike some of the systems, we are able to bring in dedicated schemes to help, so some of those schemes, as you'll see within the paper, are additional support for those individuals with known respiratory conditions, so we're able to fast-track those people through care quicker, and some additional transport, I know that is certainly a hot topic, we usually talk about when I'm here, but it's an additional transport to help people get to appointments or out of hospital quicker, and some additional, for example, paediatric capacity as well, to help us see younger people much quicker, so just some examples of what we're actually doing. The plan itself details all of the risks, I think, very, hopefully you'll agree, very, very clearly. Risks usually occur at moments of what I call hand-off between care, so you'll see the risks around ambulances arriving into our hospitals, and our ability to take that patient into a hospital, or then, when a decision to admit is made, a transfer into a ward area, or a transfer out back into the community, and the key there is to, and it says very, it's very easy to say, isn't it, to maintain flow, but that is the connectivity across the whole of the system, and the richness that this winter plan offers. The plan is really clear as well, that I cannot sit here and guarantee that the demand on our services will not outstrip the capacity, and I think anybody who could sit here and assure you that would probably be rather foolish, but what I can set out for you, hopefully, is a winter plan that is considered, based on partnership working, has prevention at the centre, and has a range of governance sat around it, where we regularly come together as a system to discuss, review, action, difficult issues, and that meeting, there's actually twice a week that meeting takes place, and I chaired that yesterday evening at four o'clock, where we do that. I think, if that's okay with you, Chair, I will stop, because it allows extra time, you've obviously read the paper, hopefully, I think it probably speaks for itself, and I know you'll probably want to ask myself and the team some questions, so happy to take those. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we'll now move to questions, please indicate again to me or to the Vice-Chair, if you wish to speak. Councillor Armiger, I saw first in.
I just read in your presentation about staff vaccination, is it right that the target is set between forty-five per cent of staff, so that's just a target of forty-five per cent of the staff having received their flu vaccine, and do you count how many, do you have a log of how many who have had the vaccine? Thank you.
Yeah, I can take that one. So, the flu vaccine among staff has been declining over the last couple of years, and that's why the target is where it is. What the national team asked for was a five per cent increase from twenty-four twenty-five, and that was done on a provider basis, so every provider was expected to achieve that. We do keep track of where we are with staff vaccines, really pleased to say that for healthcare workers as a whole, Lincolnshire's got the best uptake across the Midland systems, so that's going really, really well, and one of the ways we achieved that was, we maintained our system seasonal vaccination programme right through the summer, so when Rebecca talked about starting, planning really early, so what we did is we had all the partners sat around the table, trying to understand what those barriers were, and how we could overcome them. Forty-five was the number based on the five per cent, that's not what we want to do locally, you know, the offer is there for a hundred per cent vaccine uptake, and we are seeing really good uptake already in the programme.
Thank you for that, I have councillor Reeve next.
Thank you. My question also revolves around vaccines, because I have concerns that you actually know the figures of how many staff have taken up. In the report, at least four times, it mentions phrases like, the executives contacting staff individually to encourage uptake of winter vaccines. There was a situation during Covid where staff were disciplined, and I believe even fired for not taking up the vaccines. That's a very personal choice to have a vaccine, you're injecting something into somebody's body, and I have concerns that if staff don't want to take up the vaccines, they're made to declare they're not having the vaccines, and I think it should be personal, it shouldn't even be on somebody's personal record, whether they have or they haven't taken up the vaccine, because that could then be held against them at some point, if they've chosen, for whatever reason, not have those vaccines. And I just have serious concerns. Personally, I'm in favour of vaccines, I have most of my vaccines every year, but it's a personal choice for frontline staff, and I have concerns that you even know the figures as to how many are taking it up, because I think it should be something that's entirely a personal choice, and I wonder if you could elaborate around that, please.
No, thank you for that point, absolutely take that on board, it is a personal decision, staff vaccines are not compulsory at all. We do know the overall number, that isn't monitored on an individual basis, so I can't see if anyone working as a frontline healthcare worker has actually had the vaccine or not. We monitor it through, it's a staff record, we know the total number of staff, and we know the total number of vaccinated, we don't know names of people that are not vaccinated. What we're trying to do this year is really provide the education around the benefits of being vaccinated, and create an atmosphere where staff have time and feel educated enough to decide themselves whether or not they want the vaccine, obviously from a protecting patients perspective, and protecting staff themselves, strongly, strongly in favour of staff being vaccinated, but it's not compulsory, it's not monitored on an individual basis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kendrick.
Thank you, Chairman, I'd like to be a bit greedy, if I may, with your indulgence, and make a few points. I noticed that there's a reference to service fragility on the East Coast, and you do mention in the report ways to address this in terms of CAMHS particularly. in the report ways to address this in terms of CAMHS particularly. I was just wondering how that's progressing. Secondly, councillor Armiger beat me to the question about flu jabs. For 30 years, I used to have my jab, although I wasn't a clinician, I did work with patients. So I thought it's important that I protected myself and the patients I came into contact with. And I'd probably say every year, I'm quite amazed at less than half of our staff actually take that up, because I think it's something so important to have. And finally, if you could perhaps explain a little bit more about the Optica system. I have to admit, I know nothing about the new Optica system and how it works. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. So the fragility on the East Coast, again, those of you who were here last year, we talked about the fact that in the Lincoln locality and surrounding areas, we have what we call a MUIAC, which is a mental health urgent assessment centre, which is almost like an A&E for those with mental health conditions. And that is now all age, so that sees children up into adults. Over in the Boston and the East Coast area, we do not have a MUIAC. And, you know, the ability to have one of those, given our current financial climate, isn't something that is on the cards in the immediate future. So what we do in that area is work with our staff from our mental health trust and our staff from the acute trust, so that anybody accessing mental health services over in that area can do so in a different way. That requires a slightly different staffing model and I think, again, you will have heard the difficulties in staffing and recruitment, we've discussed that here before, and the difficulties as you move over to the East Coast, that becomes more and more difficult. Part of our plan this year, as it was last year, if you recall, was to shore up the community mental health services, so using a little bit of investment in that area to make sure if a person does approach, does come into the ED departments, the emergency departments at Pilgrim, because that's where typically they will present, we have a slightly different model, almost like a rapid response type model in that area. But that's what that fragility kind of refers to. It is around the difficulty of recruitment and the difference in service provision. And it just requires us to think differently and deliver our services in a slightly different way.
Yeah, I can recall that the problem on the East Coast has been there for, well, in the 30 years I was in mental health services and it's obviously ongoing really, which is state affairs we face. Sorry, I've interrupted you.
No, 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 no.
Because I know there's a couple of other points to come.
No, no, not at all. You know, you've heard very similar from cancer, it just requires us to deploy in a very different way, in an innovative way. And certainly we track very, very closely and are measured very closely on our weights for mental health within our emergency departments. Your question in relation to Optica, I don't have the finite detail around that, but Optica is essentially an IT system which allows the hospital and community services in its connectivity to see patient flow, so exactly who is in which bed at what point and where their destination is. So in my simplistic terms, it's a bit like the cockpit of an aircraft, it's allowing the hospital to fly the aircraft, if you like, in understanding, because the pace of flow through hospitals now are much quicker than when I was a nurse, it's important that we have the IT infrastructure. So it allows to optimise the flow. But I'm sure, I believe Darren is coming shortly around discharge and flow, so I'm sure he could talk some more detail around that. That's Darren Fragley from the group.
Thank you. I have councillor Morgan next, please.
Apologies councillor Kendrick.
Yes, sorry, I missed that too, so apologies.
It was just about whether you have any further observations as regards flu and the fact that we seem quite happy to have the take-up at the levels that it is and it doesn't seem to have changed over years.
We're certainly not happy with the take-up where it is and the ambition is absolutely to improve that. I will be really intrigued to see where we finish up at this year's total. So in terms of frontline healthcare workers, we've already surpassed what we achieved last year and still relatively early and what we're hearing is there is still demand there. I think having that system group that met really, really early and bringing partners into that conversation has really, really sort of built some bridges that we didn't have previously. I think every provider looked at it in isolation for a period of time. I think bringing everyone into the room, understanding the barriers, making it as accessible as possible, should lead to us actually seeing improved results and then we'll want to keep building on that and, you know, evaluate the work that we've done.
Okay, thank you. councillor Morgan, please.
Thank you. I have to say, welcome the fact that we've got all-age treatment centres now for those with mental health issues. I am aware the winter, just generally, never mind the north, with like cold flu and everything else can cause issues in that area. I was watching a documentary recently though about care leavers and was really struck, mortified about the issues they face. And I wonder if we have anything in particular additionally to support them or make them aware of the services that are available as they're moving from care and out into the community.
Could I just seek clarity on what do you mean by care? Did you say care leavers?
Yeah, care leavers, it's this cliff edge that they go off when they're 18. You're 18, goodbye. And my understanding is last year alone, 90 youngsters killed themselves who come out of care about within six months, I believe in care.
No, I totally understand and what you're talking about is a transition from child into adult. I can't answer that question in any depth other than both child and adult mental health services, you will be aware, are delivered by our mental health trust in Lincolnshire and there's an awful lot of work done in that interface between how we ensure continuity of support, not based necessarily on an age, on a you are an ex-age and therefore this should happen, but that flexibility as you move into your early twenties to continue to receive the support tailored to what you need. But if there's anything really specific, could I come back to you on that, because I don't have that to hand.
I think one of the key things that strikes me is it's around communication, because a family would wrap around, say, oh yes, you need to go to wherever. It's like, how do they know that they haven't got that support at that critical time? So it's bad enough hitting the cliff edge without then having other issues. So I just, it's how we communicate, maybe working with the care providers to help, that's what I'm thinking.
I totally understand. If I could come back to you, that would be great. Thank you.
Tracy, you want to come in?
Thank you. Yes, the councils took a review of young carers last year, and out of that came about 12 recommendations. And that included sort of around improving communications, working with different health bodies, transitions between children's services and health services. So there is work in progress between children's services and health services to improve those and working with NHS bodies to actually raise awareness about young carers. So there is work in progress already around that.
Thank you for that. I now have councillor Lee, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have to make notes, otherwise I forget all the things that I want to say. First of all, I think people have to realise that the hospitals really are creaking at the seams and it's not really winter pressures, you know, it's all year-round pressures, it's just, it's even worse in winter. And that's why I welcome the NHS 10-year plan so much, taking stuff out into the community, because it's got to happen, it's just not sustainable any longer. And I did very briefly endorse me, I wanted to make the point as well, it's really important that ULHT are a supportive employer in terms of staff retention. And I have to say, in my experience, they really were, when I was stressed to the hilt with my daughter being ill, they gave me three months off and I was able to look after her when I wasn't fit to look after other people's loved ones. So they are a really good, in my experience, for 20 years. I wanted to say something about vaccines actually, because it's 25 years or more since I trained. And I think what people don't realise when they raise COVID is that, first of all, anybody whose relative goes into hospital, you want to have a confidence that your relative isn't going to catch COVID or other germs when they go in there. So I do understand the necessity for that. And anybody who joins the NHS knows when they take that job that there is a requirement to have vaccinations. And it's not just COVID, you have to have hepatitis, tuberculosis, there's a whole range. And to be honest, they're absolutely vile to have those vaccinations, it makes your arm really sore. But if you want to join the NHS, you know, that's one of the terms and conditions to keep the patient safe. So I do get what people say, you know, they don't want to have a COVID vaccination and da-da-da-da-da, but nobody makes anybody join the NHS at gunpoint, you know. They make that choice and it's for a very good reason that they're required to have that vaccination. My stepfather died of COVID, which he caught in a nursing home, and my mum had multiple A&E admissions at the end of her life during COVID. And I wouldn't have wanted her catching COVID off somebody on the staff. And I think it's for that reason. But like I say, it's not just COVID, it's also hepatitis, TB, a whole range of things that you have to have and I still have them. I finally wanted to say as well, because we always talk in this about discharges and all the things that hospitals could do so much better if they only listened to people on committees telling them how to do it. And I do think that we ought to stress the fact that within the NHS, people know what the, it's right to hold people to account and raise it here, but we know what the problems are, you know, and people are making efforts to tackle them and that's what this report's about. But sometimes when I sit here, listening to people say, oh, you should do this, this and this to get people out of beds quicker, I just think, do you not really think that that's not already happening? So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee. councillor McGee, please.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to say, like currently working within the NHS, that we are rounded up quite regularly. I was in training the other day and the flu jab people swooped in and they were like, right, come on everybody. So there's a, and there is a choice, there's a choice. I'm going to share, I personally can't have the COVID jab. I was one of the very few unfortunate people that had quite a severe reaction to the COVID jab. So I have to swerve it and I've had it every time and it, you know, I get COVID and it gets less and less bad for me. So I know I'm walking around as potentially as somebody who could transfer it on, that's not a nice position. And most of us take the fact that we're NHS staff really seriously and exactly like councillor Lee says, we understand that we have a duty of care towards other people. So like, it's being pushed really hard and I appreciate the fact that it is, but it is still a choice. I could say no and nobody looked at me like I was a pariah in a room, nobody was bothered. So there's certainly no sort of big brother monitoring of us having jabs or not having jabs. And just within the report, and I can see that there's a section, it's on page 62, that says that our baseline workforce is very different in comparison to previous years. And it mentions that some key services are going through workforce change, but doesn't say which key services that is. Is that something that's likely to be coming to this committee? Because I can see that we've got something on the agenda potentially next time. Is that confirmed? Because it looks a bit woolly in the workforce. Can I ask you, Chair, really, I suppose that one's for you, and to see if you guys can elaborate on what those key services are?
Thank you. And thank you councillor Lee for your support previously and yourself. And I would say, you know, vaccinations in protecting our population is a key public health initiative, but there are other methods that we all can use, such as handwashing and distancing and not going out if you're well and all of that, and masks and everything else. So it would be remiss of me not to mention those things. With regards to workforce, I think clearly you've probably got an item on that. This is about how we navigate our way through the finances of the country, of the NHS, making sure our workforce is in the right place at the right time. But also refers and is implicit around the changes, you'll be aware, within the integrated care boards and the support that we offer to our partners in navigating winter. And I sit here today as an integrated care board staff member, as the winter director, I do not have clarity that that is the offer that will be here next year. So there is uncertainty around the structures of the NHS, but then within teams as we work to balance the finances, protect patient care. So, you know, each year that becomes more and more difficult as you move through on that journey, because you lose your wiggle room, if that's the technical term that I'm looking for. That, you know, and it's only right and proper that we highlight that.
I think something's about innovation though. I sit here and I'm 36 years in the NHS, I'm that old, and we're still doing things in the acute that we were doing 36 years ago when I started. So some of it is, we've got to move forward and we've got to think differently and we've got to completely shake up our structures, like we've talked about around primary care. And, you know, and I hear your passion and support for the NHS and not telling us what we already know, but I'm paid a lot of money by Lincolnshire residents, so I think it's right that I sit here and we have our feet held to the fire by you guys, because there's a lot of money goes into the NHS, a lot of money. You know, you look at other services and it's beholden upon us to constantly be changing and I don't think we've been that rapid at doing that. And some of the stuff we've done hasn't necessarily been for the benefit of the patients, it's just been process, process, process and process, which doesn't actually deliver benefit. So I think this whole left-shift agenda, and again, because I know colleagues in the room will have heard it before, you know, care in the community, move to home, I mean, it's been called that many different things, really fill this time with the national mandate, where our feet are being held to the fire nationally and regionally and within this room, that it will happen. And to do that, we can't have wiggle room anymore, because we've had quite a big wriggle blanket and we haven't done what we needed to do with it. So it's about absolutely transforming service, we've got to, or else I don't think we will be able to deliver services in the next decade.
Thank you for that. councillor Reeve.
Thank you. In section 5.1, the infection prevention and control, no mention is given to the use of the correct specification of face masks. I had a horrible situation during COVID. I purchased for myself masks that were rated as FFP3, which has an actual bacterial control, it's the same standard that's used in operating theatres where infections need to be controlled. FFP2 also provides that protection. However, I turned up at the hospital, A&E for something in my eye, was wearing an FFP3 mask, I was told to remove that and put on those pathetic paper masks on that provides no protection to myself or anybody around me. I refused to put it on and was told, well, perhaps you could just pop it over the top of your existing mask. Now, if frontline staff aren't being offered the correct level of protection and the emphasis from what I'm seeing is all on vaccines, the second level that you need to go to, in fact, I think should be the first level, is the issuing of the correct level of masks to frontline staff and even potentially to people who are coming into the hospital, if they're worried they're going to catch something in there, if it's a patient that needs oxygen masks, I sort of think that's not feasible. But if everybody else is wearing the correct level of masks, then there won't be the infection issues there. And I just wonder if there's any plans in place, because there's no mention in 5.1 on infection prevention and control of using that correct level and has it been investigated at all? Thank you.
Thank you. So our clinicians across Lincolnshire this year have come together to develop a infection control, risk assessment and then response, because where we've got into difficulty previously is that inconsistency in advice to individuals that you have an example of, but also the inconsistency across the county, where one of our organisations has instigated mask-wearing and then you go into a different place and they haven't. And that is just as crazy as individual advice that is wrong. So we now have a very clear risk, I can't speak, risk assessment thresholds and we review that on a weekly basis, based upon the level of infection that currently exists within the county, based on advice from our public health teams, based on what we see. And again, you will have heard me talk previously about what we often see is waves of infection coming from west to east. So I am often on calls where I'm beginning to see this is a heightening issue within the Birmingham areas, those sorts of areas, and that's the way infection spreads across, so we're able to act quicker. And you will see that is live at the moment as we have stepped into the first step of that currently to protect our patients coming into our high-risk areas. that currently, to protect our patients coming into our high risk areas. So there are currently some parts of the acute hospital that where patients are deemed to be at significant risk, if you like, because of their health conditions, that we have instigated step one of that risk assessment and that's reviewed. As you see, the influenza rates going up, could be Covid, could be any other infectious disease, you will see us move that threshold through as a response. Because you're quite right, vaccination alone will not hold, and I, and I refer to that also around hand washing and other distancing techniques, including masks. First line is what you refer to the fluid resistant face masks. And that is based on, that is not our local decisions, that is based on national evidence of providing sufficient protection as, as you enter our services. Want to add anything, Caroline?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry you had that experience, because it didn't matter what you're wearing, what mask you're wearing, what, what you've got on you. We, our duty is to serve regardless. So, you know, it doesn't matter what you present with, we have to provision service. So I'm sorry that you were made to feel uncomfortable and I'll take that back to the organisation.
So it wasn't that I was made to feel uncomfortable, it was, it was the absurdity of taking off a mask that has biological protection, it's part of the specification of the mask, to put on one of those pathetic blue paper masks. And if, if the first, once you've reached that trigger point, my question is, what mask will people then be required to wear in a given situation? Because if it's those paper masks, those blue paper masks, they're about as much use as a chocolate fireguard, to be perfectly honest. And only a, a mask that is designed to give biological protection will actually do any good. So is, is that part of the specification, once you've reached that threshold?
The, the blue masks, as you refer to them, are what we call fluid resistant face masks. They're what surgeons wear within theatres. They are what I would call the, the national level of acceptability, if you like, as first line masks. The one you're referring to are the FFP2 masks and then FFP3, which is the particularly fit tested, where people have to be individually tested, that we use in, in high risk areas. So I, I guess my answer to your question is nationally it is accepted that, as you refer to them, the blue masks, the fluid resistant face masks are the ones that are adequate to provide that protection. It is absolutely crazy though, that you're asked to remove a mask as your choice for FFP2, to replace it with what we'd call FFP1, which is the, is the basic face masks from an infection control point of view. That absolutely makes no sense whatsoever. And you, you've heard Caroline apologise for that.
Thank you. Have councillor Morgan next, please.
Thank you. Can you, I've got two questions. First of all, on page 67 of our report, in the blue box, it says our ambitions this winter include, it says reduce the number of patients experiencing long waits in emergency departments by embedding a single front door approach on our acute sites. Can you just explain to me, please, what that means exactly? And also, I, I've worked in home care and, and when people say care in the community, I actually have alarm bells. I don't, I really am not, I don't have faith in that because of my own frontline experience. And I'm just wondering how we are working with the in effect social care providers, of which I know there are a significant number, a lot of private companies, et cetera, to ensure we are actually providing care in the community. And it's not just about medical care, it's all the other wraparound things people need. I had an experience with one of my residents where they were actually released from hospital on the Friday, they'd had a hip operation and had gone in as an emergency, no food in the cupboard. And the nearest time they could get a manager to do a risk assessment of their home to get care was on the following Monday. So they had basically, and you can get care, but you can't get food. There, there are some real, that you would have if you were in hospital. So there are actually some quite big gaps in care in the community. So I'm just wondering if you can explain how we're getting that assurance. I have recently heard of, of others very similar tales where people have been released out to actually not have the right equipment, not have the right care provision, or being left with meals in front of them because the care is on a timed thing and they're just walking out the door. They haven't got the level of care you would get in a hospital ward. And in that case, that was a 90-year-old gentleman who was seriously ill. So I would appreciate your.
So one front door is a whole concept that we've been working on since April of this year, which is instead of having multiple entrance points to the hospital to present for emergency care, you come through one front door, which is staffed by our UTC and our ED staff, and you get streamed to the most appropriate place for your care. We're really trying to develop the concept of that the only people that should be in our EDs are people who have a threat to their life or their limb. So we should only ever have 30 to 40 people maximum in our EDs, or else we've had a major incident happen, because everyone else should be in our S deck, so our same day emergency care, in our assessment areas or in our UTCs. One of the issues that we have is that we channel everyone into our ED department. So our ED department ends up having 110 people in there and we've got all of these assessment areas behind the scenes, which we're not maximising. So we've done a huge piece of work to move inappropriate work out of our assessment areas, increase our assessment area space and, and rationalise our streaming at the front door. We're going live for the new streaming model in the second week of January, where we absolutely are going to be supporting that life and limb work stream. It's really tough, we've been trying to do it since April, because it's a real cultural issue, because our clinicians want to do the very best they can for their patients. So they're, they're always cautious about making the wrong decision, quite rightly, it's about safety. But we need our clinicians to expand those thresholds, thresholds and use the services that we have, so that our ED can be for our sickest patients, so our clinicians in there can focus on those sickest patients. So that's our one front door. It's one streamer streaming our patients to the most appropriate space. We want to always get it right. You don't get it right when you do one front door, but where we get it wrong, those patients are still going to be in a place of safety and we're going to learn from that. So we're encouraging our colleagues to make sure they record any incidences where patients may have gone to the wrong place. So that's one front door. I agree with you about care in the community, I lived through the whole care in the community work stream and that whole thing about no food or not being able to get in the door or not having the key lock. So Darren, who's coming to talk, I think, about discharge is our lead around this, our executive lead and around the whole left shift piece, which is around, around make, taking acute care out, not, not just the care, but the people, the services, the resources. Because I think what we've done before is we've said, there you are, you can have that service, but you're not having the people, you're not having the equipment, off you go and, and, and deliver it within your current envelope or your current footprint. This is about actually lifting and shifting whole services out. And, and I think that will, will, will seek to alleviate, I'm not sure how you ever can eliminate it, some of those incidences. But I know the ICB are also doing a huge amount of work around the whole left shift piece. I don't know if you want to come in, Rebecca.
I mean, I, I started by saying that the plan is inclusive of everybody. And when I say everybody, I genuinely mean everybody. So Lincoln, for example, are absolutely as the representative for home care work. Melanie is part of winter planning, et cetera. So as is our third sector services. What you can't do, of course, is reach every single care home agency across the board. But just to offer you that assurance, I'd already spoke a little bit about some of the governance and, and how we do winter in, in Lincolnshire. And the meeting I chaired at four o'clock last night is, is of relevance to, to what you've just said, because one of the things we've identified very quickly is we have a vast number of people accessing services in health and social care, that they don't necessarily need the full, the full amount of, if that makes sense. Because what they need is almost a resettling type service. So when you've been in hospital a very, very long time, what these individuals need are somebody just for a few days to make sure they're okay, they have got food and, and they are able to, the house is warm, those sorts of things. And at the moment, we don't really have any sort of service that, that necessarily does it or does enough of that. So that was absolutely the discussion last night with the remaining small amount of money that we've got. That was one of the key, not issues, but key things that we've identified through this ongoing review of the data, ongoing listening to our staff and the feedback and ongoing listening to what patients, our population are telling us. So that's one of the, the considerations currently around what could we do in winter that will speed up the discharge process by making sure people have the confidence to go home and are able to go home safely with just a, with a, with a small piece of intervention, rather than a whole service that they don't necessarily need.
But I think there's also something about the loss of community as well, because there isn't the neighbourhood and the community that there was, she says, sounding like I'm harking back, but there isn't whereby people knew that their neighbour was in hospital and was coming back and put bread and milk in the fridge. In Sweden, they've done a brilliant piece of work around this, which is around involving care homes within the community, schools within the community, village hall groups within the community and trying to engender that sense of community that we've lost in a lot of areas and, and utilising that community resource to do some of this. Because I'm still not sure that we'll ever eliminate that one person won't go home and there won't be bread and milk in the fridge, just by what we do organisationally. I think we have to try and, we can't, I don't think we can ever replace what we, what we had, because I think of technology and the whole way the world has changed, you know, in my lifetime. But I think what we can do is harness some of that community resource out there. There is that much of it going on. And when you look at the whole model in Sweden, they're even accessing coffee mornings and getting people on coffee mornings, instead of going and having a cup of coffee and watching a film about something, actually knowing patients within their own village or town who are coming home and what they're going to do and how they're going to support them. And I think there's a real power in, in harnessing all of those people who want to help.
Thank you. Do you want to come back, councillor Morgan, quickly? Thank you.
I may. Yeah, yeah, thank, thank you for that. Actually, I went to presentation, funnily enough, on the plague. And one of the things that struck me is we've gone backwards, actually. During the plague, it, the government required the, in effect, the equivalent of your town council or your mayor to actually look after and provide food to people who were behind those doors and boxed in. We haven't, during Covid, there was, there was none of that, actually. But there was voluntary take up, but there was no actual requirement to do that. And maybe we could be looking at our parish and town councils a bit more, picking up that point. That's just an idea, but that, that structure's there already, could we be using it more? With regards to your one door, or single door approach, I am a bit concerned about that. Maybe that's because I'm somebody who presented at A and E without any obvious symptoms of a potentially deadly illness, and I did have. I had an appendix mass that was about to burst and I was immediately seen by a consultant. But I was lucky, as my life was saved because of that. And I'm a bit concerned about how in reality that's actually going to work, because it's this bit with like 111. We're relying on the patient to an extent to understand their symptoms might be life threatening. And I don't know, I, I, I'm not sure in how that really would work on the ground. I know you talked about learning from it, but I'd rather that that wasn't at someone's cost. I am, I am a bit concerned. I'm not quite sure how it works also where you've got, I understand somewhere like Lincoln, where you could say, oh, I'm in this, this room now and I've got to go to that room because I'm in the wrong place. But what happens when it's somewhere where it's an urgent treatment centre, for example, like, I don't know, Louth or Grantham, and actually they've got to go, go somewhere else. I mean, Grantham unfortunately has got a hybrid, probably a bad example. But how does that actually work? What delays are we building in by doing that? Have we looked at that?
Yep. And, and, and I perhaps didn't explain it properly. So we're going to be following the national triage system. So you can come in and actually, you, you will have a full workup. So we won't be relying upon the patient to tell us what's wrong with them. We will absolutely still be doing that diagnostics. And it'll be a senior clinician at the front door who you're able to speak to, who will be able to refer you through to diagnostic tests. But then it's about making sure that you're not sat in the chair of our ED waiting room for 15 hours, when actually you could have been in S deck and seen within an hour, because our S deck does amazing services, as does all our assessment areas and our ED. And when I say learning, so it's, it's about, when I say about the wrong place, it's that we might send you to the surgical assessment unit and you could have gone to S deck. It's not that you should have been in there and we've sent you to the wrong place and something's going to happen to you. It's about us just getting that streaming, because streaming is quite complex. So it's just about learning for those streamers around the decision making to ensure that we've got consistency across that. Safety is paramount for us. We recognise the privilege of delivering front door services and that people often come to us as a place of last resort or resort, or more commonly, because they can't access services everywhere. So it is, it is absolutely imperative on us to get that right. In our smaller services, so I absolutely hear you, our UTCs, they don't have the breadth of back end services to support them. So this is very much at Pilgrim and at Lincoln. But we're absolutely doing lots of work to support our UTCs at Louth, at Grantham, at Skegness, because we recognise that the important service that they, they, they provide for our communities, but we just need to do it a bit differently there, because we don't have the same service provision. So it's about us ensuring that our staff feel supported to see the right patients there and that the wrong people don't end up going into those UTCs and, and not getting the care that they need, that they're absolutely appropriate, directed to the right services at Lincoln and Pilgrim. And the work that we've, we're, we're doing at the moment is making sure we've got that directory of services right, not just for our staff, but for all of the residents of Lincoln. So it's almost like a, a, a just eat menu. Actually, I've got this wrong with me and this is where I need to go, not having to go from pillar to post around all of our various sites, which ties in with the transport piece that you were talking about. And then what was your second question? Sorry? Sorry?
It, it was the, it was the point about you like working with the parish councils and the town councils.
Brilliant idea, brilliant idea. And I, I think that's something that we just need to take away, because especially in Lincolnshire, so I'm new to Lincolnshire, and such a massive community presence. I've never worked anywhere where you hear so much from people and which, but, but, so I think, you know, and again, I could be romanticising it, feels in Lincolnshire that we still have the skeleton of that past community. I think we need to sweat it.
Councillor Lee next, please, thank you for that.
Thanks, Chair. I went back to the NHS, I'd been to Parliament for two and a half years and I went back to the NHS of all weeks, the last week of March in 2020. And it was a bit of a baptism of fire. And I have to say, when you did get the time to go on social media, telling people me that, telling me, there were people saying that we were imagining Covid and it weren't really happening. I just thought, you really don't know. I was nursing some of the people that did have it and actually seeing the ones that didn't make it as well. So I'm actually quite insulted by the conspiracy theory stuff. And I just wanted to point out, you know, because I've got issue actually with some of the comments and descriptions of those masks. Apart from anything else, staff had to take a Covid test before we started every single shift. We had to toddle down to the uniform place in the middle of our shift, run down there, literally pick them up and run back, make time to do that and, and make sure that you recorded the result of what that test was. It wasn't just that you walked in and put a mask on at the front door, you had to test. And I think that was in every area. I was in cardiology, which is high risk, but I believe that was hospital wide. And to describe them as being useless is, is just not fair. Surgeons wear them in theatre, they were wearing them in my mum's care home. At one point, we were wearing them here when we came into meetings. And in actual fact, I didn't get Covid until July 2022. So I went quite some time on the frontline nursing people who'd got Covid and those masks protected me. So I, I don't accept the descriptions that have been made of them. And it was actually, it was the aprons that I thought were dire. I mean, they just went round, you know, what about your arms? Don't, are they like not magnetic to germs, I used to think? But that, that was rather down to the current, the, the government at the time and some of their friends. And I just wanted to come back as well about reablement after discharge. And I sit on the Adult Social Care Committee as well and I always speak up really loud and proud about reablement and support for people. I think it was called HART, wasn't it? Where they went in and got the milk and bread and made sure the heating worked and that sort of thing. Because I, I do think that confidence is key. And you're absolutely right, somebody might not need a whole medical team, they might just need someone to get them a pound of milk and a loaf of bread to get them. But again, we do know that, well, I say we, I've not been there for over a year, but that is known and it is worked on, you know, so that is taken on board. But I just felt really strongly about the comments about masks, because I don't think they were fair and they weren't the whole picture. We were Covid testing as well. It wasn't just masks. We were Covid testing as well, it wasn't just masks. But I take your point about not wanting to take your mask off. I actually had a fit mask, got measured up for it, and the only, from memory, we only wore them if you were in direct contact with a patient who was symptomatic, and I think I only wore mine less than half a dozen times, something, it was, they were horrible. Wearing one of them for 13 hours would have been something, it was bad enough, wearing the blue ones, and I mean, we wore those for a lot longer than the general community wore them. It went on for ages, wearing those blue masks, and you used to have little lines and sore bits on your ears.
Sorry, Councilor, can we move on from the masks now, because the other people wanted to just talk about the winter plan.
Yeah, but I do think it's, I think when they're described in that way, Chair, it's important to reflect the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilor Mackens on us next, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Rebecca, thank you very much for your report. I'm really sad about the breakup with the ICB, it's been really worrying me, because you focus on Lincolnshire, it's a huge big area, and it's really important, once we get diluted and we're over in Nottinghamshire, all of us on the east coast are going to be like little crumbs off the table, and it really worries me. But I would like you to be my nurse, because you're exactly what I want in a nurse, and you're kind and considerate and all the rest of it. Caroline, we have, all of us district councils have wellbeing teams, and the wellbeing teams go out and do the social side of stuff, they're really good, you can actually, I can send somebody's name in, they'll be on the phone to them that day, and they've sorted out all sorts of problems for them. I stopped an old man in the street the other day, because he lives in my ward, and I know he's really, really struggling, and I said, would you like me to, would you like me to send your name into the wellbeing team? And he said, and I said, I told him a bit about it, and he said, oh, I haven't got a telephone, I hate them. And I said, well, it might be a bit more difficult. He said, I'll go and speak to my wife, who's in a care home, about it. But it's us in the community, and I think we, in where I live, we're doing one-pound meals for individuals who live on their own, whatever age they are, to help them, give them warmth, we give them security, we give them all sorts of help, and I think a lot of us in the community are actually doing what it is that you want us to do. And I think with a bit more encouragement, I've got the household, I've got £2,000 from the Household Fund, and if I've got families that I know are really struggling with gas, electricity, whatever it is they need, I can help them along the route. So all of us in the local government side of things are helping, and I think if you contacted the heads of the wellbeing teams, we could get a really good system going, and I think that would tick your community box, because I like your passion. And Stephen on the end, I'm a bit funny about vaccines now, because I was fobbed off on an age thing for having a shingles jab, when I had three Covid jabs, which wiped out my system, and I ended up with shingles, of which I'm still suffering the ill effects. So whilst I get what you're trying to do, sometimes it's a bit difficult for us to come to, but I do wave the flag for the shingles jab, and I wish it wouldn't keep messing around with the ages, because it confuses everybody, and the more people that have it, the better, because I don't want them to suffer like I did. But thank you all very much, and I like all your passion and all the rest of it. Keep it up, and I'm sad about the ICBS, because I know what a good job you do for us. Thank you.
Would you like to come back? I'm conscious.
Thank you, I think probably, thank you for your comments, and I'd love to be your nurse, so that would be, that would be wonderful. I think, you know, Caroline's talked about the neighbourhood work, there's a lot of work we need to do in that space, that is crucial, the joining up, I do believe the ingredients actually are out there to some degree, it's about how we create the recipe now and really move forward with that left shift, would be my comment. Around ages of vaccinations, you know, that is something that the JCVI agree and recommend based upon risk thresholds, and something that we are required to adhere to without view, so, you know, we do that. I know there's been, you know, a lot in the press and a lot of feeling particularly around the Covid vaccine this year, and the changes to that, you know, healthcare workers are not eligible for Covid this year, as are some individuals in, who are still very young, but, you know, not as old as before. So, yeah, those risk thresholds change each year, and that is agreed nationally by the JCVI. I don't know, Steve, if you want to say anything else about thresholds for vaccines?
Yeah, so we are obviously bound by, you know, the national decisions in terms of age cohorts and eligibility, and that is based on JCVI guidance, as Rebecca said, that updated today. But I think there's a wider point in terms of how it's communicated when it is changed. You know, this year we had the introduction of the RSV vaccination for the first time. At the start, the uptake, uptake was pretty low, and when we actually spoke to patients, it's because they weren't aware that there was a new programme, it was very reliant, even when they were contacted by their GP practices, I've not heard of RSV, what are you talking about, why invite me in for another vaccine? So there's definitely work we need to do around when there are changes to programmes, how that's communicated, and making sure that elder patients are aware, so they have the option to take the vaccine up if they want to, and I think we can play a part in that locally in terms of our local communications, how we share those national decisions and make sure that people are well-informed.
Thank you. Councilor McGee, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to come in and say that we actually do have the kind of scheme that you're talking about, operating in several areas across Lincolnshire. I can think of in West Lindsay, so the Good Neighbourhood schemes, and we've got one, I believe it's called Springline in Ingham, and it is absolutely what you're talking about, so taking people for hospital and GP appointments, and making sure they've got food in, going and being a listener in ear, somebody to check in on somebody. So those models already exist, and if you guys are looking at that, I would encourage you to speak to LCVS, which is our, you know, community and voluntary sector, and as someone who was, used to be a social prescriber, that was the kind of scheme that I would be referring somebody into regularly. So I suppose it is about looking at what we've already got and what works really well, and then unfortunately finding the funding to replicate it. You know, we talk about this in Gainsborough quite a lot, and the lack of those kind of schemes and getting them up and running, and it's finding volunteers, and I think sometimes in the villages, because they're smaller communities and more connected, that that happens. And so, yeah, so I would go and say, look at what's already out there, talk to your community connectors and your SP teams, and they will probably be able to tell you where it's happening all over the place, and maybe utilise that when you're looking at discharges and things, as an additional layer of support when people leave hospital. But an excellent report, and I thank you for it. Okay, thank you.
Here, listen to this, and I think we need a map, Rebecca probably told me we've got one, of every single detail of what we do, and then I think, then I ought to automatically go to, because it's the way I think, and then we shouldn't duplicate, we should try and spread, but then you lose that community thing, don't you, that you talk about? So there's something around, when we come back here, you need to ask us, is it all hot air, or where's your map?
I'm going to come back on that, because, I mean, I've been out of social prescribing for, yeah, probably five or six years now, but there was talk about mapping services, and it's incredibly difficult when it's community and voluntary sector, because they change all the time, they can pop up and they can disappear again, and so it's how do you monitor that? But we do have people that are key in the know on the ground, and that would be your community connectors and LCVS, who are aware, and they have voluntary forums on the regular, and they are the ones that would be able to give you information and keep you updated regularly. So I think rather than duplicating, finding someone to go off and do a load of data analysis and mapping, is talk to the people that are already doing it, and then maybe potentially, so I don't know how far along they are with mapping, but it can be very difficult, because community schemes can pop up and disappear within a year because of funding issues, so it would be a very difficult thing to do. But those that know, your community connectors in particular, are aware of all of the local services, and so, yeah.
But I would suggest it's not beyond the wit of man. I think of the money that we spend within the acute hospital, duplicating, provisioning stuff we shouldn't provision, and all of the work that we do that is of no added value whatsoever, is, and there's something around, do we need to redirect some of that resource, even if we have one or two people for the whole of Lincolnshire, who can know that, you know, we've stopped giving free tea at the village hall in wherever, because it just feels like such a precious intimate resource, it just does.
I would say go and speak to the leads of LCVS, and they will tell you where they're at. When I left, they were looking at mapping as much as possible. Macmillan have a map of all of their services, so right off the bat, you could go to Macmillan and then all of their cancer sort of community groups and things, they are mapped, they do that. So, yeah, I would say go and speak to them, because they are absolutely in the know of how far along they are with that, and if you could support them, they would welcome it hugely. And so, yeah, good neighbourhood schemes, I would champion them wherever, and us as councillors have the opportunity to really push for that kind of thing in our communities. And so, yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you. Councilor, you want to come back? Can you be quick, please, because I've noticed that we've only got 20 minutes left, we've still got another item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for indulging with me, Chair. Thank you, thank you very much. I just wanted to go back, actually, two bits. First of all, the, going back to the front line of the A and E, you mentioned Grantham, but I'm just slightly concerned about, and I'd like a reassurance with regards to what you're proposing. Grantham isn't an ordinary urgent treatment centre, it does have more specialist care behind it, doctors and also even consultants when required to come forward. So I just want to make sure we don't end up inadvertently diverting people away from them, that then has a knock-on impact on the number of patients who they've seen, so we end up losing those at Grantham. I'd just like that reassurance, please, on that front, because that has unfortunately happened to our services in the past. With regards to the care in the community, I think it is a postcode lottery at the moment. I do actually have a concern about how practically you can keep tabs on all of the community. I think it's great what the community's doing, but I, we couldn't even do a summer events activities on our district website, because there's so many different groups, to try to do this would be a nightmare. This county used to have Mills on Wheels, I used to be a Mills on Wheels volunteer.
Sorry, sorry, can you move to the point, please?
Yes, sorry, and we've lost that, and I think we could do with restoring something like that back. I know some communities have it, but it is really patchy and really piecemeal.
So there's no intention to downgrade the services at Grantham. At Grantham, though, we need to support them around the patients that walk in there, that are acutely unwell, that Grantham doesn't have the services to support. I'm always really clear about Grantham, we've got our elective hub there, we are determined to make that elective hub be one of the best elective hubs in the country. At the moment, we don't maximise it to the amount we need to maximise it, really lucky to have a cold site that we can send our elective work to. So our intention is to grow Grantham, not to change some of the services, because we just need to think about how we use that site, but it's got our elective hub, and that is the future for us, so absolutely. Round the front door, it's about ensuring that it's safe.
Sorry, elective is very different to acute, only emergency, totally support anywhere you join elective, as long as it's not at the cost of acute, that's all.
Absolutely, around keeping that front-door ED service provision safe, and ensuring we get the right patients there. One of the challenges is that we have the wrong patients turn up at Grantham, because we don't signpost correctly, and we don't, and then they end up having to get transferred to Pilgrim or Lincoln, but there's no intention to change that service provision.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish you to speak? In which case, I take that as a no. I would just have a few questions of my own, sorry to prolong the debate. On the question of GP vaccinations, I note that, of course, GPs are contacting all their patients that are ineligible groups to say, please step forward and have your vaccinations. Are you happy that they chase up people vigorously enough? And is there a process in place if people miss the deadline set? So is there a system in place whereby somebody can be nagged again consistently until they actually say, no, you don't want this? Because people may accidentally not do it, and we do want to have this high take-up of vaccines. So I'm concerned about that, because obviously we're not, you can never be sure people actually got their text or read the communication, which is always a concern with dealing with, you know, certain patient groups. So I'm concerned that we shouldn't give up on people who haven't stepped forward and had the vaccination and allow them to do that. I noticed that we've also been talking about the front door, and nobody's mentioned 111, which is quite surprising in an hour and a half of debate on the winter planning. And I suppose that's something that is important to us. And on page 16, you have a little graphic there with some ticks and some ticked points about priority areas, and a lot of those concern GPs and what GP's role in all of this is. And of course, it's constantly said to this committee that GPs are the main front, primary care, the front door of the NHS for most people, most of the time, which of course is true. So are you happy with the fact that those points in there, particularly things like supporting direct booking for GP appointments, are strong enough? I wonder whether people would like to see that you can mandate all GPs to do all their booking through 111. If, so any, so it's not a lottery, depending which GP you're actually registered with, all of the things on that list, there will be a standard level of service across Lincolnshire, across all 81 GPs, there will be, you have a right to expect, if your GP is up to standard with the other 80, they will have X, Y, Z in place, you will get that level of service. And I think that is a concern that I have, and I constantly hearing myself in my own area. And finally, we've got a plan. You've heard what we've said about it, I wouldn't say that we've held your feet to the fire necessarily, but there's been some very strong opinions put forward, and so the answer is, how will we know whether the plan has been successful or not? What are the success criteria? Will you be able to come back to us in six months' time, nine months' time, and say, we got it right? We didn't get it right, this is what we've learnt? So if you could, if you'd like to comment on those, please, thank you.
Yeah, so coming in on your first point in terms of GP vaccinations and following up on patients, so the very short answer is yes. So eligible patients will receive a national letter or text message, letting them know that they're eligible, the national team will then follow up on that with a further one if the patient has been contacted, but then GPs themselves are expected to follow up. They will send out invites into clinics, that might be sending out specific times or inviting them to book online or book via phone, because they will start their clinics at different times, so some might go day one, some might wait until the weekend to their first clinic, but there is an expectation that they will then follow up with those appointments. We also have access to data that lets us know if, and again, it's not, it's just a number of patients, it's not individual patients, but we know patients that were vaccinated last year that haven't been vaccinated this year in terms of numbers. So as an ICB programme team, we will follow up then with our GP practices, saying, is there any reason that you've had, you have had the feedback from patients in terms of why they've not come forward this year? There may well be reasons, they may be hearing the patients, I want this year, but if you haven't, can you contact them again, and can you keep contacting them right through to the end of the programme? So we know that the flu programme runs right through beyond Christmas, and the Covid one ends shortly before Christmas. Generally, what we see is 80% of total vaccinations are done between the start of the programme and mid-November, but there are still those 20% of vaccination clinics that are absolutely continuing going forward, but we know the majority of patients have come forward, but there are those that we have heard about that do prefer a vaccine closer to Christmas, because they think it offers them more protection over that Christmas period, where they probably are likely to do quite a bit of socialising, see people, so there are patient choice where they want to be vaccinated later in the programme, but we are absolutely, as a programme, taking form of practices, saying, this is what your plan looks like, what are your plans for remainder of the programme, are you continuing to contact patients?
Thanks, Steve. If I take your latter two, so the primary care one, am I satisfied? I'm never satisfied, I'm never satisfied, it's a journey, isn't it? And that's why I sit here, it's a journey of continual improvement. What I can say is, our GP practices, our primary care services are engaged within our winter plan, they are a partner at the table, and they are independent contractors, you will know that, and, you know, that is always, always a challenge. There are requirements placed upon them, and in reference to this, there's requirements placed upon them into having appointments available to directly book for 111. If I just remind you, in Lincolnshire, we have a slightly different setup around 111 in that a lot of patients, particularly in the out-of-hours period, will actually come into our clinical assessment service that is Lincolnshire-run, it's run by the group, Caroline's team, so it's an extra layer, if you like, of patients having access to Lincolnshire clinicians, that is staffed by nurses and doctors. So that helps us manage that primary care booking, if you like, in hours, but there is absolutely more to do. With regards to success factors, I'll answer it kind of quantitatively and qualitatively, if that's okay. So success factors, we are monitored, Caroline is monitored very, very closely by the ICB, by me. We regularly talk about what, you know, how is she achieving four-hour waits in her emergency department? What are the 12-hour waits like? What is our C2 mean ambulance response times? And are we achieving, what I'm saying is, there's a set of targets here. That's how you'll know that this winter plan has been. That's how you'll know that this winter plan has been enough. But also, I'll hear from you and I'll hear from our patients and that is what is just as important and that's why I've got a governance system set up that I've got, which is twice a week with the system, so we can hear from Dean, producers, probably not personally, Dean, but your health watch produce a report that comes to us each month. We review that, we look at that, we hear and hopefully then we're able to be agile enough to, to respond. So in brief, Chair, quantitative and qualitative.
Thank you for your responses, thank you. Councillor Lee, you want to come back quickly?
Yeah, and it's a really quick one. I've, I've complained several times because where I live, people can't access wound care, they have to go from the O mine estate in the north of Lincoln right down to the university site and I'm waiting a knee replacement, how the heck I'm going to get from there down there when I'm on crutches, I don't know. But I'm actually meeting with Dr Reed Baker and the MP for Lincoln to discuss it because I am so worried about it. But I think you make a really good point, GPs are ultimately, they're small businesses and I don't think for a minute that none of them want to give the best possible service because I'm sure they do, but it doesn't always work for the patients. Thank you.
Very quickly, councillor Mackinson Saunders, we have to stay off 10 to 1.
We heard at the last meeting, there were problems with Spilsby surgery because the doctors disappeared, et cetera, et cetera. And one of the casualties was the injections, the flu and et cetera. We didn't have an update on that and I wondered if those have been reinstated for the people of Spilsby area.
Noted, we will take that offline, thank you.
I can come on that chair if you'd like and answer now.
I think you've got the right person in the room to respond.
Oh, do beg your pardon, forgive me, please.
So just to say, so the local community pharmacy in Spilsby ran a number of outreach clinics on behalf of the practice, those were really, really well attended. Looking at the uptake for Spilsby, it is very much in line with where they were this time last year. So there may have been a small delay to patients being able to access vaccines, but we have put plans in place and actually now we've caught up.
Thank you. Apologies, I should look up one else, be more attentive from the chair. So thank you. Nobody else wishing to speak? Thank you, everybody, for that report and I think this was quite an interesting debate. I hope that you've taken something away from it and I hope members of the committee have as well. We are asked to consider and note the information presented in the report to us and my suggested proposal is one that the presenters be thanked for sharing information on the winter plan for 24, 25, sorry, for 25, 26 and for answering the committee's questions. And two, that the committee receives a report on the winter plan for 26, 27 in a year's time. Do I have a proposer? Councillor Mackinson Saunders, secondly councillor McGee, thank you very much. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. All those against? Any explet, any abstentions? None, thank you, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your presentation, thank you for being here. And now Tracy, thank you for your patience. We now have item seven on the agenda, which is the work programme, which Tracy is going to introduce in Simon's absence, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. So the committee's next meeting is the 17th of December. The three items currently listed for this agenda, which are on the NHS dental services, GP practices in Lincolnshire and the Lincolnshire System Workforce Update, Health and Care. On the January agenda, there's also a few items that might relate to what sort of discussions have been ran today. So there's an item coming from NLAG, there's also one on the non-emergency patient transport and also an update around neighbourhood health. Caroline, which was here, mentioned about an item on discharges coming through, which I can't see on the work programme, so I'll follow up with Caroline on that and it looks like we've got that programmed in for you. But happy to take any suggestions for passing on to Simon, thank you.
Thank you. Any thoughts, councillor Lee?
It's interesting suggestion and I'll be really quick. Just to mention as well that we've got the joint scrutiny committee, haven't we, on the 3rd of December with regard to the public health consultations for the one you, Lincolnshire.
Yes, I think that's been booked in, yeah, thank you.
Looking through the list then on page 84 of the Agenda Act, is anything anyone would like to particularly prioritise to get put in for the April or May meetings next year? Councillor Morgan and then councillor Mackinson Saunders.
Thank you. I think we agreed that we, which is why it's on this list, that the maternity services would have a review. I think by, given it was October, by then it would be some time away, so I think it would be appropriate to bring that back. That's, that's all right with you.
So to try and put that one in for May, I suspect, then six, that'd be six months, more like six months, okay. We did prioritise the community pharmacy, we haven't discussed pharmacy and availability of medicines for some time, have we? So should we put that, try and get that one in for April or May? Sorry, councillor McGee.
Yeah, I was just interested in the Lincolnshire System Workforce Update that's due to come next month. It says representatives from the NHS to be confirmed. Do we have any confirmation of that?
Not yet, no. Who it will be, no. It was, it was deferred because there was a problem with staff changes. And that's why it's been, it's, it was deferred, isn't that right? That's right, Tracy, yeah.
Within the report that we just saw, there was mention of workforce change and, and, and I'm particularly concerned about flow, which was what she was talking about within mental health services. So in Lincolnshire, we have the AMP service in terms of people being able to be sectioned and go into hospital and we have section 75 social workers who are there to make sure that packages of care are in place to prevent people ending up in hospital and to support when they come out. And I just wondered how those two particular aspects of that are working currently, so I'm quite focused on whether or not we're going to get those in, Chair.
If you have any specific things that you want us to ask to be covered off with the report, please make sure we're aware of them and if you could like to put that in an email or something, that would be very helpful.
I will pop you an email, yes.
Thank you very much, thank you. Councillor Mackinson Saunders, sorry.
It's all right, don't worry. I thought we ought to have an item on the, the way forward with the new ICB. I think it's quite important if they're going to be shaping, I think they take over in, in April, don't they?
I mean, if, if you can trust us, we will try and put one in as soon as, as soon as we possibly can, as soon as they will, they have something to tell us, we will want to jump on it and say, right, what's going on?
We should, we, we should, way forward, shouldn't we?
It's always in our minds, I think, because I think we're all, we're all very concerned about, about the future and what the future role of the ICB will be as well. It's not just the clustering.
Yeah.
There's, there's a, there's a question over change of role as well.
Thank you.
Councillor Morgan again.
Yeah, I know, because I've been banging on about this, but it's in our list and that's the planning for demographic changes. I think we've got so much coming up development wise in our county that it's really important we, we understand this, what they're doing around it.
I absolutely agree with you. I think the problem with that is going to be that we won't get anyone from the ICB to come along and speak to us about it because they will say it's, until the dust has settled that we know what we're doing. But we can always try, of course, that's not, that's not an excuse, I'm not, I'm not wishing to give excuses and it is an important issue as, as anyone that sits on a district council and does planning knows about, all about planning for demographic change. It's a, it's a constant theme for those of us that are double haters, isn't it? Or those that sit on district councils, should I say? Anybody else? Any other comments on the work programme? Nope? Okeydoke. So is that, is that okay? Tracy, you've got everything you need there?
Yes, I made a note of those different items to look for, for April and May and the demographic changes, maybe look around sort of the July time, after a few months after they've been in place maybe, so maybe it's been booked in.
Lovely. Thank you very much indeed and let's say we wish Simon a, a quick, rapid recovery. Thank you, everyone, for attending. I'd now declare the meeting over, thank you.